Hello, it is I. It is I, vocaria here. I'm gonna be doing this finally, um... You know, last time I did this, uh, basic- I basically did my part. But we need to do everyone else's part now, essentially. Uh, I do wanna finish it today if possible. So, first thing we're gonna do is, uh... I don't know. Let's, let's watch the video. Let me see where it is. Hmm... Alright. What was it? Super glue? Super glue, um, wonder. Yeah. Hello! Oh my god, my ears. Oh, there is a part five to it, huh?
Hello YouTube and welcome back to another... Should be moving on the negative Y axis.
Mm-hmm.
The third one which is hooked up to the A key should be moving on the negative X axis. And the fourth one which is hooked up to the D key. Really extend the power of what you can do. And I think I'm actually gonna leave this first episode.
Huh... Hmm...
Hello YouTube, most of the others are actually affected by gravity so we've got the character, the soft body, rigid body, and dynamic are all affected by gravity. So, the one that we're going to be using is character and that's just because the cube that we have is going to-
Wait, what is this cylinder I have, huh? What is that? I have no idea what the cylinder is. Do I delete it? It's just a cylinder after all. Anyways...
To act like a character, the character is-
Yeah, I got that already cuz it's character right there.
Going to feel a bit more solid than if you would do dynamic or rigid body. Okay, so something else we need to do is we need to make sure that our cube is going to collide-
Wait, can you guys hear him?
With other objects in the world.
Should be able to.
To do that, we simply scroll down in the physics tab and we-
Hmm... Might be on the wrong browser, whatever.
And then we can choose what kind of shape closely matches-
You know what? I'll put up, I'll put up some music. Some YouTube music, comfy beats. Ow! Anyways, back to my video.
Our, uh, character or our object. Uh, box is definitely the best option for our cube because that's actually exactly the shape that it is. Uh, you can see we have a bunch of other different collision bound types here. The triangle mesh and convex hull both use, um, the polygons to decide how this object will collide. Uh, but we're not gonna mess with those, we're just going to be using the box collider for our character. And so now, if we play the game, we see our cube falls right off the screen. That brings up our next problem. We need to make sure that our, uh, player is able to land on something. So we're going to drag our cube up by grabbing on those arrows. If you don't have those arrows-
Oh my god, this guy is so far behind, man.
Up the chump force by a little bit, see how that looks. Cylinder, Shift+A, mesh. The same thing on every single point. So this is where we're going to add our coin.
Okay.
And we're then going to add this coin into the other layer, uh, in the game. So we're gonna hit-
Alright, so I definitely have some help with this. Let's import our object in. Coin. Import. It's in somewhere. Why is it so tiny? That's not a coin, that's a cylinder. Wait. Is that multiple? It is multiple. Oh my... Okay, how about I delete everything from here? Unless you should get this one. Okay, no. Huh? Where'd it go? Oh god... There you go. Good-looking coin. Now-
Hit Shift+A and you can make the coin look however you want. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and do a cylinder. And, I don't want it to be this high def because we have a ton of coins in the scene, it'll slow down the game. Uh, you see we have a lot of vertices, I don't want that. Click on this little plus up here. And then, I'm going to re-add the cylinder, Shift+A, mesh, cylinder. And now you see, over here, we have some options-
I don't have to do this part because someone already did that for me?
This coin to be flipped upright because, um, in the game I'm not gonna have them laying down, I'm gonna have them uh, standing up on the edge and spinning. So I'm going to hit R to rotate. And then I'm gonna type in how far I want it to rotate. I wanna rotate this 90 degrees, so I'm just gonna type in 90.
Oh, you just type it in 90 and then it will rotate 90 to- Meanwhile, me out here actually doing physics like a dumbass he is, man.
To confirm-
Hmm...
Oops. Did that wrong. R, X to lock it to the-
I gotta make sure my-
X, and then hit 90.
Yep, my stream is working.
Go back to object mode by pressing Tab again. And now we're gonna wanna make this look kind of like a golden yellow. So I'm gonna go to the materials tab down here. Add a new material and then I'm going to click on the diffuse color here. I'm just gonna select that color that looks pretty good and go for kind of a golden yellow there. I think that looks good. Okay, so then we're gonna wanna name this object something special, something that we can remember later. And a name that makes sense is coin, so let's go ahead and call it that. Click on the object tab here.
Wait, how do you make it yellow? I missed it.
Add a new material and then-
New material, huh? Where is that? New material. Where is he at? Oh, this one?
And I'm going to click on the diffuse color here.
Diffuse color and make it yellow. Oh wow, look, it's a coin!
I'm just gonna select a color that looks pretty good and go for kind of a golden yellow there. I think that looks good. Okay, so then we're gonna wanna name this object something special, something that we can remember later. And a name that makes sense is coin, so let's go ahead and call it-
Let's go over here.
That's, click on the object tab here. Here's where we can type in the name of the object.
Where? Oh, here, okay. Coin. Hmm...
I'm just gonna type in coin. And then we're gonna go back to our first layer.
That's on a different layer? Oh... I have it on the same layer.
With our cube in plane, just cycle between the two layers if you want. So we're gonna want to have an object in this layer that adds the coin in from the other layer. So we're gonna use an empty for that and an empty is just a regular game object that doesn't have a mesh. So we're gonna hit Shift+A, add-
Hmm... On this layer I'm supposed to have the coin. It's not copying over like I thought it would, but whatever. It doesn't matter. Hopefully it doesn't matter.
Empty. And you can use whichever one of these you want, I'm just gonna use plain axes. And you can drag this just like any other object. And what we're going to do is we're going to place this wherever we want our coins to spawn.
Oh, you actually do need to have it on the second, huh? Hmm... I wanna, I wanna move it then. How do I move it? Grab. Nope. Please. Uh-oh. I don't know if, it doesn't matter. I think I'm gonna delete it. Go to the second layer anyways. Uh, imported it and again, it doesn't matter. It don't matter, man. I'm telling you, it don't matter. Don't matter until I, I say it matters. Very egotistic, but... Alright. I'm gonna redo this. R. 90. Enter. What? Doesn't work. Oh god... Oh... God. Okay. Again. 90. Doesn't look like 90. That's a little bit better. That's a lot better. Alright. Then we're gonna do it again. Oh, we don't need these. This is all we need and we're gonna name it coin again. Material, make it yellow. And... Go to the first layer again. Right. And create empty accesses.
And now we're-
Alright, create empty accesses, fuck. Okay. Plain accesses.
We're gonna add some logic to it. So the logic for this one's going to be pretty simple. Right when the game starts, or right when the level starts, we just simply want this empty to add the coin object.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna add a always sensor. This will also only run once, um, if you don't change anything with it, so. There we go, that's exactly how we want it. Add an controller and just wire it straight across. It's so, this will also only run once, um, if you don't change anything with it, so. There we go, that's exactly how we want it. Add a end controller and just wire it straight across. And then we're going to add a edit object actuator. And the first option that the edit object actuator has is add object. So this actuator will add an object into the scene at the position of the current object. So make sure that's wired into the controller and then we have this little field here, if we click it, you can see an option of all of the different objects we can add using this actuator. So we're going to select coin.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so now if we play the game by moving mouse over the 3D window and, uh, moving the mouse over the 3D window and hitting T key, we see we get our coin added-
Oh god, where is this camera?
Adding it. Okay, so why did we go through all that trouble whenever we could've just put the coin on the main scene? Well, it's pretty simple. Now, all we have to do whenever we wanna add more coins into the, into this scene is we just hit Shift+D and then we can drag this object around. So now we've got two of these empty objects. And if we play the game, both of those empties add a coin. So, this makes it really nice because we just put these empties wherever we want the coin, just hit Shift+D to duplicate and then drag them around with the arrows wherever you want. Play and you see we can add in coins wherever we want them.
Oh wow.
The reason we did it this way is because, let's say I don't like the way this coin looks. Say-
Oh!
I think it, I think it looks a little big in the game scene. Well normally you would have to select each individual coin and size it. Make sure that they're all the same size. Well, all we have to do here is enter edit mode, hit S to scale it down and make our coin smaller.
Hmm, I see, I see, I see. That's why we put it on a different layer. So you can change it later, later. Hmm... How, how does this help me though? I guess it helps a little bit cuz it's like adding logic. Oh my god. I might as well do the entire project by myself, honestly.
Go back to our first layer, play the game, and you see they're all smaller. It's pretty nice. Okay, so now we're going to add the logic for our coin. We need the player to add to a score whenever he collides with the coin and we need the coin to disappear whenever he collides with the player.
Hmm, yeah.
So let's go ahead and add the coin part first, so go to the second layer, select-
Go to the second layer. Yep.
Select our coin. Hit Add Sensor and this is going to be a collision sensor because we're trying to detect if we-
Collision?
Colliding with an object.
I clicked invert on accident.
The field here is the property field, that is empty. This is telling the sensor which specific game property it should look for. So, for instance with it empty like this, any object that collides with the coin will trigger the sensor. If we type in, for instance, player, then only objects that have the game property named player like that will trigger this sensor. Okay, so we're gonna have that collision sensor, we're gonna add a and controller-
Oh, okay.
-wired straight across. And we need to end the object or destroy the object, so edit object. And then we see we can have a few different options for this particular actuator, so we have add object. If we click on that, we get a few different options. We have end, replace mesh, track to, and dynamics. Well, we want to end the object whenever it collides with the player, so we're gonna go ahead and do that. Okay, so remember that this collision sensor is only gonna detect objects with the property player and the spelling and capitalization has to be exact. So we go to the first layer, select our player object.
Okay. Select the cube, add game property.
Hit Add Game Property. Got it there. Add game property.
Player.
And we're going to name this player exactly like we put in the sensor over there.
Mm-hmm. Got it.
Good to go, so now we hit P to play the game, move towards the coin.
And then... Hit P to play the game. Oh god, the angle, the angle! Alright. Yep. It disappears, nice. I'm learning! Um, Shift+D? No, Shift+D. Yeah, there we go. Oh, I should've done that from the beginning. Like that. I'm learning, I'm learning. Big, big brain. Big brain, and then we just do press P. Oh look, coins nom, 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 nom. Wow! Big brain. Hmm...
We see as soon as we touch it, it disappears. Awesome. Okay, so now we want to add to a score whenever the player actually collided with the coin. So, to do that, we're going to add a collision sensor because we're detecting if we're colliding with the coin.
Oh god. Collision sensor.
So we're gonna type in the property field, coin. Add a and controller, let me get that. Uh, there we go. Wire that straight over to the and controller. And we're going to add a property actuator. So the property actuator can adjust these properties on the side here, these game properties. So what we're going to do is we're going to add a game property and we're gonna name this game property, uh, score. Let's hit that. And we're gonna hit this little eye here. That eye allows us to see the property in the side of our game window. Okay, so then, on the property actuator, we're gonna switch its mode from assign to add. And we're gonna click here and we can see all of the properties that we can change. So we're gonna select score. We're gonna add a value, uh, let's add 10 each time you get a coin. That sounds good. Okay, so in order to see this score property, uh, updating in our 3D window, we need to go to game and show debug properties. So what that will do is it will display any of those properties that we have, the eye checkmarked on. Will display any of those up in the top left of our game window. Okay, so if I play the game, you can see there in the top left we have-
It's not working.
Cube, uh, score equals zero.
You gotta-
That's showing us that the score property on our cube equals zero. And if we collect the coins, nothing happens.
Yeah. You liar.
Well that's because we told our collision sensor to only detect objects with the property coin but we never added that property to our coin object. So now we need to go to our second layer, select our coin and add a game property to that. And we're gonna call that coin with the exact same spelling and capitalization. So now we go back to our first layer, play the game, go collect a coin, and you see the score is added.
Wow!
To make the coins look just a little more interesting, let's have them spin, spin around in the, in the world. So go to the second layer, we can just simply add a always sensor, add a and controller and a motion actuator because we want to make the coin spin. We want it to spin on the vertical axis, so we don't care how these coins are rotated, so we're gonna uncheck the local coordinate and just adjust this. You can go ahead and preview it by going in the 3D window and P. Uh, sure, that looks like a good speed. So if we go back to our first layer, play the game, now we see-
Huh? He's going so quickly, man! Oh my god! Those kinda look kinda weird. I think it's like off-centered by just a little bit. You know what? That's good. Unique, unique gameplay right here.
See, all of the coins are spinning. That makes it look a lot more interesting. So now we have this player that can move around on this platform, he can jump and we can go collect these coins. Okay. So I think that's gonna be it for this video. In the next video-
Wow! I'm trying to get through as much as possible today. I'm trying to get through as much as possible today.
Hello YouTube and welcome back.
Is there a way to play all? There is a way to play all. Alright, it's gonna play all of comfy beats. But I really need to learn how to do this.
This is, uh, video three in the, uh, making a basic game in Blender. I would like to say that, um, I saw a request to do the same sort of tutorial but with Python. Uh, so that should be coming out soon. Not exactly sure how soon though because I have, um, classes starting soon. Um, so we'll see how that goes. I'd like to, I'd like to do that though. So today we're gonna be adding something that's pretty important to our game. We're gonna be adding levels. So we're gonna be, we're gonna have, um. A few different, you know, coin setups, uh, maybe a level with some challenges, like some cubes to jump up on and stuff like that. So what we're going to, what we want to do though is we want to, um, sort of set our first scene up here. To be something that we can easily just duplicate and make a new level out of.
Yeah.
So one of the things we're going to do in order to achieve that is we're going to select our cube. We're gonna hit the M key. And this lets us move this cube to a different layer.
Oh.
So we're gonna move it to the second.
M key. You can move it to a different layer.
Which is.
Oh, I muted it. Second layer.
In the same place where we're storing our coin. In our first layer, we're going to add another one of these empties that will be our player spawn. So we're gonna hit Shift A, Empty. Uh, we should maybe make this one a little different than the others, so I'm gonna choose the cube.
Oh! That's big brain, alright. So empty cube. Oh god, why is that down there?
This is actually my first time messing with the cube empty. But I say that looks pretty interesting. Uh, but that will work nicely because that matches the shape of our character. And just like these empties that we added in the last video, we're going to just simply have this object add in our player object. So we're gonna add a always sensor. We could get that into up. Add a and controller and a Edit Object Actuator. Just wire them straight across like that. And the Add Object, we are going to add Cube. Okay, so returning.
Oh my god, my wiring is so trash. This is why I'm bad at aim labs. Just makes sense. Uh, Add Object Cube.
Our three D window, if we, oops, if we play. We can see that our player does spawn in and it works just like it did before.
Nice.
You'll see kind of why we did this sort of thing a little later. Okay, so we're ready to, um, start. Making our runs. Actually, one thing we should do is we should position this camera. Because whenever you start the game from like a run, uh, a standalone.
Yep.
Always go to this camera. Also, whenever you switch scenes, it will switch to this camera.
Mm-hmm.
So you can select a camera and then go to this camera's view by hitting zero on the number pad. Or by going to View and then, I believe.
Hmm. View, camera. Yeah.
Not actually sure about this. Uh, camera, there we go. Just View, Camera. So zero on the number pad and anything inside of this square is what's going to be seen. Which means not a whole lot in our, in our case here. And we can move this camera straight back by hitting G for Grab that lets us move the camera around. And then hitting the middle mouse wheel. And if you just press it down once and then release it, we can drag just kind of forward and back, which is kind of like. Zooming in and out. So we're just gonna zoom out to the whole platforms in view and there we go. Okay, so part of the thing that we're going to do, um, while we're setting up to make this kind of our base level, is we're going to want to improve some of the lighting. So some of the things I wanna change is you'll notice that the shadows or the dark sides of the objects are really, really dark. Um, and there's no shadows. I kind of want to add shadows in. Well, um, by default Blender starts up in what's known as multi texture, which does not support shadows directly. So what we need to do is go to the Render tab down here, scroll down and hit this little checkbox.
Lily Peach, can you, can you be quiet for a second, man?
Scroll down.
Oh, it needs to be in, uh, the camera view. So let's do that.
And hit this little checkbox. It's GLS.
GLSL, this one?
SL and that will let us use shadows. We're then going to go through our three D window, select our lamp, and we're going to.
Select our lamp? Where the heck is the lamp? Is this the lamp? This is the lamp?
Go to the Lamp Settings down.
Lamp Settings, okay.
Here. And we're going to switch it from a point lamp to a sun, so just click.
A sun.
Go on Sun. There we go. And you'll notice it doesn't look like any lighting's, uh, changing up here. And that's because we're still in solid view, which is kind of like a. I guess a render or color only preview of what the world will look like. So we want to get kind of a real time update of what it will look like in game. So all we have to do is select this little button here and we're going to choose Texture Shading. So now this platform should be at least about the same.
Oh god. I changed view already.
Displays here whenever we start the game. So if we hit P to play the game. Okay, so now we've got some shadows.
Oh my!
Dark. Uh, but we'll fix that.
This looks so cool though.
Hit Shift A and we're going to add a lamp. And this is going to be a hemi.
A.
What this does is it lights the objects from a hundred and eighty degrees, so it will basically eliminate our shadows. One thing we wanna do is we wanna go down here, uncheck Specular, and then turn the energy way down. So let's try like, uh. Point, oops, point three maybe? Let's try that. Play the game and you'll notice that the shadows are a lot less intense now.
Oh!
One minor problem right now and that is that whenever we go over to this top right corner, the shadow for the cube disappears. And that just has to do with how the sun lamps.
Oh my god, I'm so bad.
Fix this by going to the Lamp Settings, select the lamp.
Lamp Settings. Okay, Lily Peach, you're so loud, man. I'm trying to learn. Okay, there we go. Oh my god, she's so loud.
Settings and just up the.
Alright. What do I need?
Fix this by going to the Lamp Settings.
Lamp Settings.
Lamp Settings and just up the frus- frustum size.
To what?
Go to the top right.
Twenty-four?
Shadow still disappears, so we need to actually move this lamp away a little bit. So it's kind of back further in this corner. Play the game again. Go up here and it stays all around.
Nice.
So that's got our game looking kind of nice. Uh, one other thing I wanna change really quickly is the color of our player. So go to the second layer, which is where we have our player at. You'll notice it's really dark right now. That's because we changed this viewport to Texture Shading, which gives us kind of a live preview. Well, there's no lamps in the second layer, so we're not actually going to have any light. And without light, there's darkness, so. We're going to just hit Shift A, add a hemi lamp, and that just kind of lets us see, um, all of these objects, kind of how they'll appear in game. So I'm going to select our player cube, go to the Materials tab down here, select the Diffuse Color and. You can make it any color you want. I'm gonna make mine orange though, because orange is my favorite color.
I'll make it blue.
Go back to our first layer, Play Key. You see there we've got our cube running around. And we can collect the coins and then we'll see that our score updates. Okay, so now we've got this level set up. So that we can just kind of duplicate it and make a brand new level. So let's start out by naming this, uh, scene something appropriate. So right now, you'll notice our scene is just named, well, Scene. We wanna name it something a little more meaningful. So all we have to do is click there. And we can type in whatever we want for the name. So let's go ahead and type in Level One, because this is the first level.
Level one.
So then what we're going to do is we're going to click this little plus, which will add a brand new scene. And we're just gonna hit New and that's gonna be completely empty. Now, there are a few things that you're gonna have to change to get this, uh, to work the same as your first scene. And I think there's probably preferences where you can change this, uh, but I haven't seen any yet.
Wait, how?
So you notice that this little thing up in the center has switched back to Blender Render, but we wanna switch that back to Blender Game. Also, on the Scene tab here, we need to reselect GLSL Shading. To go and click that. And this is something that we're not going to really mess with, but, uh, it should be noted. That in the World tab here, you'll notice the world has materials and in this new scene, it hasn't used the same material as the first one. But we're gonna use the exact same material.
Wait, what did he press?
Use the same material as the first one, but we're gonna use the exact same material. It's not critical that you get that, um. But later on, uh, it might help you out. Okay, so our scene is really empty. Uh, and we want to add in the same objects that we had in our first scene.
Yeah, how do you do that?
To do is we're going to link them, much in the same way that we did the layers.
Okay, Lily Peach, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Uh, let's just, just go back to normal. Go back to normal. I'm sorry. I thought I could follow along. But you're just way too loud. Just way too loud.
So that if we change the object in one place, it changes it all over the place. So say we have twenty levels all put together. They're really nice. But then we decide, you know, the player needs to be moving a little faster. The game is kind of slow. Well, you would normally have to go and adjust the speed of the player in every single scene. That gets kind of annoying. So what we're going to do is we're going to link the objects. So if you decide that the player is going a little slow, you change it in one place and it updates it on all of the levels.
Mm-hmm.
So to do that, let's go ahead and name, uh, this second scene something more meaningful. Let's call it Level Two. And go back to our first scenes, just hit this little button and select Level One.
Mm-hmm.
And we're then going to hold down the Shift key.
Hold down Shift?
Bring up my keyboard. Hold down the Shift key and left click on the second layer button.
Yeah.
This will then display both the first and second layers. So you'll see we kind of have our, uh, our cube empty. All of the empties for the coins. We also have our coin there and we have a couple of lamps. We're then going to hit A twice or until all of the objects in the scene are selected. Uh, you can tell that they're selected and they're outlined in orange or colored in orange. We're then going to hit Ctrl L. And then this brings up this menu called Make Links. We're going to do Objects to Scene. So we're gonna do Level Two. Okay, well now all of these things have, um, gotten green dots on them. And if we go to the second scene, Level Two, we'll notice that now all of the objects are here. Sweet, right? Uh, there is a bit of an issue here though. If we move, say, one of these spawners here, if we move that over here and go back to the first level. It's moved in the first level too.
Oh no!
Move it in the first level and go back to the second level, oh, it moved in the second level as well. And for the spawners, we probably don't want that.
Yeah.
To fix that, all you have to do is select the spawner, hit the U key, and then hit, uh, Object. So there you go.
Okay.
Um, in hindsight, we probably could have made these, uh, spawners, could have done just one spawner on a base level. Um, so that we didn't have, so we wouldn't have to select all of those and do the make single user. Uh, this way will work fine. It's not, it's not that bad. So now, in the second level, we can move all of these objects wherever we want all of these spawner objects. Uh, we can even change where our player will spawn. And we can add more spawn points here for the coins. So we have more coins on this level. There we go. So we can test this level out the same way we tested the first one, just to mouse over the three D window, hit P to play. You see we got coins and the cube. This is why we did the same sort of spawning technique with the player. Is because now we can have our player linked to the first scene, but still change where it starts the second level. So we want our player to move a little faster, but we can change that and it'll change that on both the second level and the first level. Okay. So now we wanna make it so that the player goes to the next level whenever they collect all of the coins. So we're gonna go to our first level here. And we're going to go just to the second layer, so we can select our player. And we're going to need a coin.
Okay, what did he say?
Both the second level and the first level. Okay. So now we wanna make it so that the player goes to the next level whenever they collect all of the coins. So we're gonna go to our first level here. And we're going to go just to the second layer, so we can select our player. And we're going to need to change the way, oops, actually, I didn't wanna move that.
How does it work?
Um, so we're going to need to change the way that the cube, um, adds to the score. We're actually just gonna need to sort of add something additional to it. All we need to do is we need to add an actuator, and this is going to be a message actuator. And wire that into the same controller that's adding to the score property. And this is just going to be so that we can tell all of the objects in the scene that the cube has gotten score. So we can leave the To field blank because we don't care which object it goes to. Uh, the subject is going to be, uh. We can do anything that has to do with getting a coin, so let's do Got Coin. And just take note of the spelling and capitalization because we're gonna have to remember that later. Okay, so then on the first layer of the scene, of the Level One scene, we're going to select our spawner. Whoops. And we are going to add a message sensor and here's where we need that, uh, subject. And of the scene, of the Level One scene, we're going to select our spawner. And we are going to add a message sensor.
Wait, a spawner?
Of the selection to field blank. I'm going to, uh, set the message controller to time it gets the message Got Coin. And our player object will send out the message Got Coin every time it hits a coin. So then we're going, so this sensor will activate every time it gets the message Got Coin. And our player object will send out the message Got Coin every time it hits a coin. So then we're going to add a controller and add a property actuator. So then we're going to add a new property over here. We're going to name it, uh, Property over here. We're going to name it, uh, how about Coins?
Huh?
We can make that a integer. And then on the, um, property actuator, instead of Assign, we're gonna switch it to Add. So we're gonna add the property Coins, the value of one. So every time we get a coin, this coin property will go up. Okay, so then we wanna see, uh, when all of the coins have been collected. Well, we need to know how many coins are in the scene. Well, we have one, two, three, four, five in this particular instance. You may, you may have more, uh, or less. Depending on how you did it, but all we need to do.
Wait, did he do that on the?
The scene. Uh, when.
Oh, he did it on the cube. I did it on the coin. Whoops. Let's delete that. I was like so confused. Cause he didn't show it. Was it Property? Yeah, Property. Coins. But there should be zeros almost.
All of the coins have been collected. Well, we need to know how many coins are in the scene. Well, we have one, two, three, four, five in this particular instance. You may, you may have more, uh, or less depending on how you did it, but all we need to do is add a, uh, property sensor. And we're going to check to see if the property, there we see Coins. We're going to just check to see if the property Coins is equal to the number of the coins that we just, is at a, uh, property sensor. And we're going to check to see if the property, there we see Coins. We're going to just check to see if the property Coins is equal to the number of the coins that we have in the scene. So in this particular level, we have five coins that are going to be spawned in. So we wanna check to see if Coins is equal to five. Add a and controller and add a scene actuator. And this scene, instead of restarting, is going to do Set Scene. And then we can click on here and choose the scene that we want to go to. And we're going to hit Level Two. So whenever the Coins property is equal to five, and remember the Coins property is going to have one added to it every time the player, uh, hits a coin. Whenever that is equal to five, which is also the number of coins that we have in the scene, we are going to switch the scene to Level Two. So now if we go to our three D window and we.
Oh wow.
P to play the game.
Nice.
We have our, we have our player. You can move him around. We can. We have our, we have our player, we can move him around, we can go, we can grab the coins. And whenever we grab this last coin, we switch to the second scene, which looks empty. Probably because of the camera, okay, sorry about that, I had to pause the recording for like five minutes, but I'm back, um. So I think when I left off, we were getting ready to test this. Um, one thing is whenever we did test it, the second level was just a blank screen. All we have to do to fix that is switch to the camera in our first level, so you can hit zero on the number pad or go to view and click camera. So then whenever we play our game now, we can move around, we can get the coins. And whenever we get the last coin, we go to the next level. Alright, that's pretty good. So one final thing to do then is add this same sort of logic to our second level. Uh, again, in hindsight, should have added this in before we made the new level, so we need to select our spawner. Add the game property coins, oops, I have cap sucks on.
Like what was it? I don't even remember. I don't remember, so I'm using snip, snipping tool for this. Cause I don't remember, basically do the same thing as what he's saying. Message. We got coin. And. Property. And. Coins, one, I might have to do this for every level, oh my god. That's pain. Um, property equal coins. And set scene. How, it goes back to level one, yep.
I do apologize if you can hear my computer fans whining in the background, but something's, something's up with it and it's making this really sort of obnoxious noise.
Wait, why can't I see?
So anyway, we add the coins property, add a message sensor that's looking for the message got coin. Add a and controller, then again, switch to the render window. And add a property actuator, this property actuator will just simply add property coins, a value of one. Then finally, whenever the property coins is equal to, in this level, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight coins. So I'm gonna put in eight, your number might be a little different. And, and, uh, for now, we can just set this scene. Set our scene back to level one, so right now we'll just loop around, and then later, whenever we add the third level, we'll change the actuator to go to level two.
Yep.
Okay, so now we need to, uh, display or add a display for score. So to do that, we're going to hit the little.
Can't even tell if it's level one or level two, it's in the same spots. Or it's kind of in the same spot area.
Game, go down to the render tab and hit GLSO.
Oh, god.
To the scene score. So to do that, we're going to hit the little plus here next to the scene to add a new scene. And we need to do the same thing that we do whenever we add a new scene, we need to switch this blender render to game. Go down to the render tab and hit GLSO and we're good to go. So this scene is going to contain, uh, all of the GUI or graphical user interface, this is going to contain the score display. Um, unmute and unmute button and things like that. So I'm gonna name the scene something meaningful, since this scene is going to be over top of all the others, I'm just gonna call this one overlay. So we're going to hit shift A, add a camera, cause every scene needs a camera, Alt R to clear the rotation, so it's pointed straight down like that. And we can drag it up on the Z axis like so. Switch to the camera view with either zero on the number pad, we're going to view camera. And then we're going to hit shift A, add text, enter edit mode by pressing Tab. And then we can type in whatever text we want, I'm gonna type in.
Why is my text over there?
Score mode by pressing Tab, and then we can add text, enter edit mode by pressing Tab. And then we can type in whatever text we want.
Did he say tab or Ted? What did he say tab for, Ted for?
I'm gonna type in score and then colon, so this will be just kind of showing, you know, this is what your score is.
Oh.
Hit shift D to duplicate that, go next to score, enter edit mode again with Tab.
Nope, nope, that's not what I want. Okay, what, what, what is he?
So this will be just kind of showing, you know, this is what your score is. Hit shift D to duplicate that, go next to score, enter edit mode to Tab, and I'm just gonna enter a few zeros. Um, the whole space for the actual score that will display there. So then what we need to do is we need to tell this score, uh, to add every time we get a coin. Well, remember in our first level scene, every time our player object hits the coin, this collision sensor. It sends out a message with the subject got coin. And the nice thing about messages is that they can travel between scenes. So we can use that same message in our overlay scene to add to our score. So we're going to select our score like the numbers here, and we're going to add a message sensor.
Select, how do I select it? You know? How do I select the text again? Like that, I guess. Message.
The subject is going to be got coin, I have caps on it, got coin. Add a and controller. And then we're going to add a property actuator. In the properties, then, we're going to add the text game property, switch it from string, uh, you can do integer, we'll just do integer, those are whole numbers. And then on the property actuator, we're going to assign the property text equal to, actually, no, we're not going to assign it, we're going to add to it. And let's go ahead and do ten, so every time we get a coin, we'll add ten to our score. Okay, so then we're going to go to level one, our level one scene, and we're gonna go to the first layer. Select our camera, and then we're going.
Camera.
Going to make it so that this adds the overlay scene, so that we can actually see our score, so we're gonna do always and controller.
And controller.
And then a scene actuator. Scene actuator is going to add a overlay scene, add an overlay scene. And we're going to click on the scene field, and we're going to add the overlay scene overlay. So now whenever we play the game, you can see in the top left, we have.
Oh, my, huh?
Hit it by some text, so let's go ahead and turn that extra text off, so. Good game.
Oh, god, where's my, where's my mouse? Where's my mouse? Where is my mouse? I need to escape, escape, my mouse, um, why do I turn off the debug now? Debug properties, and I gotta move it. It's a little bit off center. A lot, I'm just gonna move it a bit. I'll go to level one again. And then go to zero, press play. You know, it looks so weird, looks like it's like off centered. Level one, press play, yeah, it's literally in the way, I don't understand. What's wrong with this, man? Is it because I have so many zeros? I don't know how to. Tap. Let's just do one, let's see what happens, why don't we do one? Okay. Go to level one, zero, play. Look, it's like in the way of score, I don't understand, maybe I'll just put it over here. Zero. Play, and now it's super far away, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty. Seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred, hundred ten. And it starts all over again. It's like, it's aligned like to the right, which is so weird to me, man. Maybe I'll say something to fix it, cause it's like being really weird. Let's see. Play again. Well, this, this is better, yeah. Oh, my, look at a high score. Gaming, I'm gaming. Oh, it's not gaming. I forgot my blender is so trash at this. Let's see, instead of that, let's do, let's do my monitor, I don't care, man. Oh, you guys can't see it because grass is like above everything. There you go. You know what? That, that's better, that's a lot better. So, for everyone to see what's going on, this is what I'm doing. Progress, we love to see it. Oh, there goes my cube. Alright, next part of the video.
Code EBIT properties, uncheck that, so now whenever we play, we see, we have our.
There's only part, five parts to this video, so I'm guessing I'm like super close to be finishing.
Hello, everybody, and welcome back to how to make a basic game in Blender, this is part four. Today, we're gonna be adding.
Honestly, a good, a good thing would be like. If I have separate files for everyone, now that's actually a good.
Coins, we're gonna start with the coin sound, so we want to.
Maybe I'll do that, if I have time.
So, we already know when the player is collecting a coin.
Okay.
Player object.
I'm gonna just turn off that, that thing.
So what we're going to do is just simply hook a sound into this, so to do that, we're just going to.
Is this from the humble bundle, no, this is me trying to make, uh, a game in Blender. Uh, Blender is, uh, I think. I just know it for, for most people using it for like models, like, uh, 3D models, art and sculpting and whatnot. Just the instruction video, oh, the instruction video is like super old, I think it's like seven years old. It's like from some guy named Super Gloop.
To.
Super Gloop.
And this is going to be a sound actuator.
Oh, I missed what he said, what, what is he doing?
So, we already know when the player is collecting a coin because on our player object, uh.
Oh, where's he going? Where's he going, okay, this.
We sense a collision with the coins, so what we're going to do is just simply hook a sound into this, so to do that, we're just going to add an actuator. And this is going to be a sound actuator.
A sound actuator, oh my god, dude, this guy's crazy.
Cause we wanna play sound, uh, we can wire this into the exact same controller as that collision sensor. And now we're going to hit open here, and this. This is going to point to the sound file that we wanna use, you can download these sounds in the.
Oh, my god, I have to download sounds, oh, no, bro. Yeah, I barely recognized Blender there, I only use it for 3D modeling and animation, yeah, this is Blender two point seven. So, two point seven has the game engine, three point O does not. I have to download sounds now, oh my god. What if I just, what if, hear me out? I can use the sounds that I already have, wait, I, do I even have sounds? Hmm? What are sounds, man? Do I have sounds? I don't think I do. My alert box sounds, that's not, that's not a sound, I guess I have to download some sounds. Um. Coin sound, I don't care, man, give me, give me a sound effect. Download free coin sound effects, yep. Oh, my god, why is there audio jungle on this, bro, how? It's a coin, bro. It's a literal coin. That's not bad. Uh, it's downloaded, I think. Now you open this up, oh, god. Oh, no, oh, no. Trash, that's where I belong, in the trash, anyways. Who is, imagine, I need one of those. Alright, let me get the, the coin sound, wherever it is downloaded. Yeet. Uh, it's not yeeting. Hmm? Alright. Looks like I have to do it this way. Okay, I need to back out, back in, there it is. Alright. Where's the video?
Description, um, so for the coin collection, we're gonna use the ding dot MP3, um. And then we're going to switch this from play stop mode to play end mode. Um, play stop just plays the sound as long as the sensor is, uh, activated. Play end plays the entire sound file every time that it's activated. So we go back to our first layer, we can play the game, and now whenever we collect the coins, we get this nice kind of ding noise. Alright, so now we want to add one more sound.
Oh, there it goes.
Whenever we collect the last coin, um, and this is going to be a slightly longer sound, it's gonna be a bit more joyful, I guess. Um, so we're going to add this one on our player spawner, because this is where we're switching to the next level. So we're going to go ahead and add a sound actuator.
Oh, god, dude, oh, god, dude. Now I have to do an, ah, sound for that end level. You know what, what if I just make my own sound, huh, how about that? You think I won't? You think I won't tutorial? You think I won't? But yeah, how's it going? I'm just doing homework, like, like you do on, on these streams. I'm gonna delete all of that, this is like part of my raid alert. Dude, yep, that, that, that will be my sound. For my coins. Scene end. I don't care, man, I'm not, I'm not downloading more sounds, that's stupid, okay, what, what is he, what do you say next?
Here, and go ahead and open the file, we're gonna.
So he's adding it from the actuator, sound, open, scene end.
Been chime dot MP3 this time, uh, and then instead of play stop, we're gonna do play end.
Play end.
And we can just minimize that now, and we're gonna hook this into the same sensor that's triggering the scene actuator. So then if we play the game, we go around. And we're gonna hook this into the same sensor that's triggering the scene actuator. So then if we play the game, we go around, collect the coins, get a ding. And you'll notice it still. Switches to the other scene right away without even playing that chime sound. And that's because it's switching to this new scene before it even gets a chance to play that sound. So we're going to de-wire. The uh scene actuator. You can do that just by uh reconnecting the dots like that. Uh go ahead and move it down. You can do that by pressing this.
Okay. Wait. Alright, let's try it. It didn't it didn't sound. It didn't sound. It didn't sound.
So now the scene actuator is on the bottom and we want the scene actuator to activate whenever the sound actuator has finished. So to do that, we're going to add a actuator sensor.
Actuator sensor. What is that? This one?
In the actuator field, we're going to select the sound actuator, cause that's the name of the actuator over here. Then for the controller, we're going to add a NAND controller.
NAND.
So now with this actuator sensor and this NAND controller, uh this will trigger whenever this actuator has finished doing its thing. Okay, so if we try the game out.
Alright, try the game out. Wait, why is it continuing? Oh, it's loop N. It's supposed to be play N. Whoops. That's my bad. It didn't play there. I guess you have to do it on every level. Oh my god, I'm triggered. Okay, what was it? Oh, that's the overlay. Whoops, too far. It's gonna be seen and. Play and. Bring this down. Actuator again. Sound. NAND. From here. To here. And then so if you go to play level one. Honestly, I like it. I like the new. I like the new um. New raid alert. Rain slash follow alert. Hmm, alright, what do you say next?
Now we get to go through, collect all the coins, and we collect the last one. We get this nice chime noise and then once that finishes, we're on to the next level. Okay, so now we're going to add a menu um. The menu is where we're going to add any high scores that we want to, maybe a level selector um and other stuff like that. To do that, we're going to click on this plus up by the scenes. We're gonna add a new scene and we're back in our blank scene and again. We gotta remember to switch from blended render to.
There's a copy setting.
And we're also going to go to the render tab and scroll down and find G L S L. Okay, so we're gonna make our menu just a little bit interesting. We're actually going to have a camera kind of orbiting around our cube. So first off, we're going to go ahead and hit shift A. We're going to add a plane and we're just gonna scale this ways up.
That's a cube. God damn it, man. I misclicked, man.
And you can see it's totally black right now. That's because we need to add a lamp. So we're gonna hit shift A, add a lamp. We're gonna make this a sun lamp. And we're gonna kind of copy the lighting setup we have in the actual game. So let's go ahead and rotate this sun lamp. So we're gonna rotate it forty five degrees on the Y axis and then forty five on the Z axis. So hit. R Y forty five and then R Z forty five. So you can see that's now got this sunlight pointed at an angle. Uh we're then going to go to the lighting tab down here. And you can see we have our various materials from the other lamps. So we're gonna go ahead and choose the lamp. That's the same as. The one in our level one scene. Let's go ahead and move the cursor to the sun lamp. So hit shift S, cursor to selected. Then hit shift A. So we're gonna go ahead and choose lamp. That's the same as the one in our level one scene. Let's go ahead and move the cursor to the sun lamp. So hit shift S, cursor to selected. Then hit shift A, add lamp. Hemi.
Oh my god.
And we're going to use the same as the first one, so just. Cursor to selected. Then hit shift A, add lamp. Hemi. And we're going to use the same as the first one, so just regular old Hemi. So now we're gonna select the plane, shift S, cursor to selected, and now we're going to. Add in our uh player cube, so shift A. Add a mesh, it's a cube. Uh we can go ahead and scale this guy down a bit. Just make sure he's up above the plane. And then in the materials tab, we're just going to.
What do you do?
Cursor to selected and now we're going to add in our uh player cube, so shift A. It's a cube. Uh we can go ahead and scale this guy down a bit. Just make sure he's up above the plane. And then in the materials tab, we're just going to select our player material. Okay, so now we're going to want to have the uh camera sort of orbit around our character. So first off, we need to add a camera. So we're gonna hit shift A, add a camera, and then gonna hit Alt R to clear its rotation. Drag it on up on the Z axis. And maybe back on the Y axis a little bit. We're then gonna hit R X uh forty five. Yeah, let's go a little farther. Let's try another thirty. Uh let's go back a little bit. So R X negative ten. So that's a total of sixty five degrees. So we can switch the camera view by hitting zero on the number pad. Now we can hit the G key to kind of uh fine tune its position. I think that right there is probably good. Once we have that, we're gonna hit shift A and we're going to add a empty. So you can now see we have these. Two little symbols sticking out the side of the cube. That's where our empty is. So we're gonna select our camera, shift select the empty, then hit control P, set parent to object. So now if we move the empty around, our camera moves along the. And we can sixty five. Uh let's go back a little bit, so our.
Okay, I need to fix this. I don't know what I'm doing. See. This one. This camera. Needs to be back a bit. Maybe a little bit more.
X negative ten on the number pad. Now we can hit the G key to kind of uh fine tune its position. I think that right there is probably good. Once we have that, we're gonna hit shift A and we're going to add a empty. Uh I'm gonna use the arrows one this time. So you can now see we have these. Two little symbols sticking out the side of the cube. That's where our empty is. So we're gonna select our camera, shift select the empty, then hit control P, set parent to object. So now if we. So you can now see we have these. Two little symbols sticking out the side of the cube. That's where our empty is. So we're gonna select our camera, shift select the.
Okay. There's something a lot wrong with this one. The empty is not where I want it to be. I need to do. Cursor to selected. Here we go. And then shift A. Empty. Arrows. Don't know what that is, but sure.
Shift A and we're going to add a empty. Uh I'm gonna use the arrows one this time. So you can now see we have these. Two little symbols sticking out the side of the cube. That's where our empty is. So we're gonna select our camera, shift select the empty, and then hit control P, set parent to object. So now if we move the.
Shift select. Does that mean?
Empty, then hit control P, set parent to object. Okay, so now we're going to add a always sensor to our empty and and controller.
He's going so fast, man. What happened to that empty? There it is.
And then a motion actuator.
Always. In motion.
And we can uh set this to global rotation and then we're just gonna add a little bit to the Z rotation axis. So if we play the game, we see the camera is slowly spinning around our cube. I think I wanna go a little faster than that, so we'll try something like point five degrees. The empty around our camera moves along with it.
No. Empty is not moving this camera. I don't know what. I don't. I don't I don't know what. I don't know why camera is not moving with it. This is a camera, right? Okay. So. Select this. Nope, nope. Cursor to selected. Control A, no. This A. Empty. Let's just do axis, right? Shift select. Shift select. Control P. Object. So this. If I move it around, yes, okay, good. Now you add the sensor. And. And motion. Now you press P. Oh my, that's so quick. Two point two five. Then you press P. A lot better. Let's do uh one point two five. Press P. Solid. So if I zoom in.
So now we're going to add a always sensor to our empty and a controller and then a motion actuator. And we can uh set this to global rotation and then we're just gonna add a little bit to the Z rotation axis. So if we play the game, we see the camera is slowly spinning around our cube.
That is way too slow.
Faster than that, so we'll try something like point five degrees.
That is way too slow for me.
And I think that's a lot closer to what I wanted. So now we're going to add the actual menu items and we're gonna do that the same way we added our overlay scene. We're gonna create an overlay uh scene for our main menu. So first thing is we should probably rename the scene to something more meaningful. Look, so let's do menu. Then we're going to add a new scene. We're gonna make it new and let's go.
A new scene? Okay.
Gonna name this one right away. Let's call it menu overlay. So again, we added a new scene. We need to.
What is it? Menu overlay?
Switch from blended render to blender game, go to the render tab and check GLS.
This is the render type. Where is it? Okay. Who's there? I'm blind.
So. First thing we need to do is we need to add a camera, hit Alt R to clear the rotation. Drag it on up on the Z axis, hit shift A, add a. A Hemi lamp. And we are good to go. So now we're going to create a couple of buttons that we can use to press as the player. So we're gonna have a play button and an exit button and maybe we'll add a few more later. So to add each of these buttons, we're gonna shift A, we're gonna add a plane and we can just kind of scale this to the size that we want the button to be. I'm gonna say. That probably looks good there. Keep it kind of clean and tidy. What I'm going to do is every time the mouse goes over this object, I want it to kind of animate just a little bit. I want it to become just a little bit larger so that. Uh we know that our mouse is over it. So to do that, I'm gonna have it at the size that I want whenever it's small. Make sure the keyframe is set to one. You can see that right here. I'm then going to hit I and insert a keyframe of scaling. I'm then going to use the right arrow key to change it to keyframe number two. And I'm then going to scale up the object a little bit. We'll try for that much. Hit I again and again we'll do scaling. So now if I tap the. The arrow keys left and right, you can see that on key.
I don't understand it. Whatever. I don't care. That's too much.
Keyframe one is smaller. So let's go ahead and add some logic to this button. So first off, we're going to add a mouse sensor. It's going to be the mouse over sensor. We're then going to. Have a hand controller and a NAND controller. We can wire those two up to the same sensor. And finally, we're going to add a action actuator. So this actuator is going to play an animation every time that it's activated. So we can wire that one into the first controller. And if we click on this field here, this is the action that it's gonna play. We're gonna play plane point O O two action, which is the name of this button. Now this is whenever the mouse is over the object, so we wanna start it at keyframe one and end it at keyframe two. So this will play the animation from keyframe one and stop at keyframe two. So it'll get it'll get a little bit bigger. So then we wanna add another action actuator and wire that up to the second controller and we'll play the same action. But now we're gonna play it with a start frame of two and an end frame of one. Alright, so we could try the game and you'll see if I can find where the mouse is. You can see that it's working, but we can't see the mouse to use it. So what we're going to do is on the render tab, we're gonna scroll down until we see this display panel. And we're gonna make sure to check mark mouse cursor. And we're gonna make sure to checkmark mouse cursor. So now if we play the game, you can see now we see the mouse cursor in the game, and we can mouse over that plane, and it gets just a little bit bigger. Why don't we go ahead and add a sound to that as well? So we're gonna add an actuator. We're gonna add a sound actuator, wire that into the first controller, go ahead and open the sound, and I have this tap- Wire that into the first controller, go ahead and open the sound, and I have this tap dot MP3, you can download that in the description, and we're gonna do a play end. So now we play the game.
I don't care.
We'll get this nice kinda clicking sound.
I don't care, I'm using the same sound!
And one final thing that we wanna do, is we wanna add another hand controller. And we're going to add a mouse sensor, and this is going to be left button. So now we're gonna wire both of those sensors into this controller, so this controller will send out a signal to the- Now we're gonna wire both of those sensors Into this controller. So this controller will send out a signal to the actuator whenever the mouse is over this object, and whenever we press the left button. So we can go ahead and add an actuator, let's go ahead and make it a scene actuator. And we'll just wire it in there, and instead of restart, let's go ahead and do set scene, and let's set it to level one. So if we play the game now, we can mouse over that button, and if we left click, it starts level one. So the problem is, right now that uh, if somebody just starts playing this game and they've never played before, they're gonna have no idea what that button does. So let's go ahead and add a label to it. So we're gonna hit Shift S, move cursor to selected. Uh let's go ahead and orbit around the 3D view. And if we hit Shift A, and we can add a text. We can drag it just above that plane there. And switch back to the camera view, and we can just move this text to wherever we want it. Let's go ahead and type in-
Oh god, what is he doing? Shift A. Text. Oh god, it's too big. I can't even see it.
And switch back to the camera view, and we can just move this text to wherever we want it. Let's go ahead and type in what we want it to say, I'm just gonna drag this down here for now. So enter edit mode by pressing Tab, Backspace, and let's go ahead and switch it to play. Okay, so that's great, but uh, white on white doesn't exactly work. I'm gonna go ahead and change the color of the button. So with the button selected, we're gonna go to the materials tab.
Materials tab.
Uh, we can go ahead and add a new one, let's give it a name, let's name it uh, menu button. And, I think we'll stick with a sort of orange theme for now. And I'm gonna go ahead and make it shadeless. And then with our text selected- You'll notice, if we have the text there in the game, whenever we play the game, you'll see it kinda moves and it kinda gets pixelated. That's because Blender is converting this text object into a texture based text object. Um, and that's fine, but let's go ahead and convert this to a mesh so that it looks exactly like it does in our 3D view. So we're gonna hit Alt C, convert to mesh from curve. So now, we play the game, and it looks exactly like it did in our 3D preview. Okay, so one final thing we wanna do is make it so that this text moves along with the button.
Hold up, where the heck is it? Why can't you see it? It's clearly above it. You can't see it. Hmm? Am I getting troll here? It doesn't exist. And there we go.
So we're gonna select the text, Shift select the button, hit Ctrl P, set parent to- So now we can play the game, mouse over that button, and we can see the whole thing gets kinda bigger, we get that nice click noise. But now you'll notice if we move over the word, the button shrinks back down again. That's because the mouse is detecting that it's over the text, rather than over the plane, and so it doesn't tell the plane to get bigger. So we're gonna select the text, go down to the physics tab, switch the physics type from static to no collision. And we can play the game, mouse over the button, and we get the mouse clicking noise. So now we're gonna want to add a new button, we're gonna add a quit button. So we're gonna do kinda the same thing that we did before, let's select both of those, hit Shift D.
Shift D.
Drag that button down, uh, let's go there. Select the text, hit Shift S, cursor to selected, we can go ahead and delete that text now, so hit X and delete. Shift A, add text, let's go ahead and-
Oh, delete the text, delete the text, they said, delete the text. Hmm? What?
Scale them on down, hit X, hit Shift S, cursor to selected, we can go ahead and delete that text now, select the text, hit Shift D, drag that button down, uh, let's go there. Select the text, hit Shift S, cursor to selected.
It deletes the entire thing. That's because I have it on parent. What if I need to press U first? You know? I can't. Hmm? This is part of it. Go back? Hmm? It moves both of them. No. It's, it's connected to this, which I don't want it to be connected. Hmm? Hmm? Just, just do that, honestly, just do that.
We can go ahead and delete that text now, so-
Then we make our own text again. Oh, that's why the size is uh, yeah, whatever, man, don't matter. Think it matters about text, I don't care. Oh, play needs to be uh, what's it called? That one. This one, last one. Where is exit, why is it not showing that? Okay, there we go.
Hit X and delete. Shift A, add text, let's go ahead and scale them on down here. And let's enter edit mode tab, and type a new text, let's call it quit. And then again, we're gonna do Alt C, convert to mesh. Select the text, Shift select the- Button, Ctrl P, set parent to object. Now if we wanted, we could change the color of the text too, but I think I'll leave it white like this. So now we play the game, and we've got two buttons here. And you'll notice that our quit button is doing the same thing as what the play did, and that's because I forgot to switch it from static to no collision. Now we play the game, and we've got two nice buttons that play a nice kind of clicking noise. I'm actually gonna drag that button up a little bit. Let's go like that.
I don't care about his buttons.
If we play the game and we hit the quit button, it goes to our first level, so we need to change that. So on the quit button, we're gonna go to this scene actuator, and we're gonna actually replace it, so instead of a scene actuator, let's go with a game actuator. And we're gonna switch this from start game from file to quit game. Alright, so if we go back to our menu scene, we can select our camera.
Menu scene. Menu scene. Yeah, that one. The camera.
Add an always sensor, add a- A hand controller, and then add a scene actuator. And then we're going to add a overlay scene, and the scene is going to be our menu overlay. So now we can play the game, we've got our cube kind of orbiting in the background there, and we've got two buttons there. Now notice the mouse isn't showing again, so we need to do the same thing we did earlier, go to the render tab, and scroll down until we find the display panel, and then make sure we checkmark mouse cursor. So now we play the game, we have these buttons, we can quit the game.
I don't think this is supposed to be like this.
Or we can hit the play button to start the first level. And one thing you may not be able to notice, maybe you do.
Hmm? What is this?
Main menu scene is actually in the background of our game. Uh, we can see this if I scale up our cube on the main menu to where it takes up the whole screen. If we hit play, the scene in the background, there's still the cube.
Yeah, what the heck?
Uh, we don't want that.
Yeah.
So what we need to do is go to the menu overlay scene, select the play button, and we're going to add another-
Select the play button.
Scene actuator.
Another scene actuator.
So we're gonna wire that up to the same controller.
Same controller.
That sets our scene to level one. And we're gonna switch it from restart to remove scene. And we're going to remove the scene menu. So if we go back to our menu.
Go back to the menu.
We hit play, we can hit the play button, and we're in the first level, and the main menu isn't in the background anymore.
Nice!
Okay, so one final thing I wanna do in this video is, let's make it so that whenever we finish our second level, which is currently our last level, rather than going back to the first level, why don't we take it to a finished game screen? So to do that, we're going to add a new scene.
Another scene.
We can go ahead and click new, and let's give it a name, how about uh, finished? And again, we're going to need to switch from Blender render to Blender game, in the render tab, scroll down until we find GLSL. Hit Shift A, add a camera, hit Alt R to clear its rotation.
Oh my god, not this shit again.
And drag it up on the Z axis. We're then going to hit Shift A, add a hemilymp. And finally, let's go ahead and switch to camera view, hit Shift A, we can add some text, um, and we can have it say something cheerful like- Like uh, like congratulations.
Oh, I can't see it. Nice work gamer. Hmm? You. You beat. My game.
Congratulations, you won. We can change some more of the ways this text looks by going to the text button here, uh, and I'm going to Scroll down to where I can find the alignment, and I'm gonna do center. So I can drag this one over here to kinda the center of the screen. So there we can see our text, congratulations you won. Uh, let's go ahead and convert that to a mesh, so Alt C, convert to mesh. Okay, so we play the game, so congratulations you won. So that's great, but what if our player wants to play the game again, or what if they wanna go back to the main menu? Let's go ahead and add in some buttons here. So to do that, we're gonna go back to our menu overlay scene, where we have these nice buttons already made up. And we're just gonna hit Ctrl L, link objects to-
Ctrl L.
Scene, and let's link them to the finished scene. If we then go to the finished scene, we can see we have one of our buttons. It's here, and I'm just gonna hit the U key, and make single user object. So let me go ahead and move this button uh, down here underneath the text, we'll hit Shift S, cursor to selected. Uh, let's go ahead and orbit around into the 3D view, Shift A, add text, drag it up just above that plane.
I like how it's like completely, so off. Whatever, man. Hmm. Nope, that's not working.
Now we can switch back to the camera view. Scale that text on down, maybe move it over a little bit. And let's enter edit mode with tab, and let's swap out this text for something a little more meaningful, let's go ahead and type in uh, Play again. And we can scale this to where it fits inside that button, hit Alt C, uh, actually, let's hold off on that for a second. Let's go ahead and select the plane and the text there, hit Shift D, we can drag this on over. Uh, let's put that one right about there.
I can't type it. Oh, it's it's linked. I see. Hmm, can I press U? No. Hmm. What is the point of this? Just make a new text for him. What was the exit on again? Let's go to the menu. Nope, menu overlay. Oh. It looks like I moved this. Oh, because it's stuck, okay. Quit game. Instead of the two scenes, it would be quit game. Uh oh. Okay. Something's wrong here. Where's the exit? No, I have to look at the new plane. Alright. Now what?
Went over this way. So now with this first text selected, I'm gonna hit C, convert to mesh.
Oh, did I convert yet?
Select the text, select the button behind it, hit Control P, set parent to object, then I'm going
What the? Do you see what's going on? It's trolling me. Hmm, I guess I'll just make a new plane. Fuck it, dude, I don't care. Not that, not that, not that, not that. Two mouses. I don't really need the second mouse. So 'cause I'm not doing the 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 hovering thing, whatever, man. So action one and game. Action one. I don't need that. You can have the sound though. So game. Well, not game, but scene. Think it was scene. Set scene to scene one. That's good enough, honestly. Oh, I need to remove scene as well. Scene, remove. Scene. Something like that. And then this can delete. Hopefully, this is two different things. Game. Quit.
Going to select the text on the second button.
Why would you wanna go to the main menu again? I'm just going to the exit. I don't care. Making it go to the exit.
Finish and this actuator. Add a Nant controller, wire that in. Wire that in. So that will have that sound play at the end of the second level. And then the scene actuator, right now it's setting it to level one. Instead of that, we wanna set it to finished. So now, we go back to our menu. Play the game. Level, buttons, which should text. Okay, go back. No, it's never been played. Hello, everybody, and welcome to your gaming case. And so just use, yeah, our since uh just gonna leave this to another one to get says play them. Now, let's have can hit, yeah, view row. On out down, but it may work. Scroll down, up this, I don't know, long frame to get the right key. Because down, just here, I'm gonna take this for our sensor. And we're going to be looking for the property player. Make sure the capitalization is the same as what it is on our player cube, so you can see the first letter is capital. Is to hear this random button. Uh, and I'm gonna go with a kind of
Oh, I do I, do we really need a button? That's so much work, man. So much work for a button. So much work for a button. Is it worth? Hmm, save. Hmm. Alright, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna see. If I wanna play some games, you know? I'll do this later. I'll do this later. Think I'm gonna play some TFT or something. Nope. Oh, I I saved Blender, so I should exit it. Alright, let's play some TFT or something. Let's see here. Change this to TFT. Okay. Oh, Rizzo's on Valor. Ooh. Now he doesn't play with me. He doesn't play with me? Grinding to gold. Grinding to gold. Goldaroo? Gold, 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 gold. 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 It's time to get to gold. It's time to get to gold. It's time to get to go, 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 go. It's time to get to gold. Let's, oh, there we go. Alright, I'm building Syndra and Zyra once again. We has never let me down, definitely. Oh, decline. It's time to go to gold. It's time to go to gold. I am bored. I am bored. Honestly, I wanna join. I don't want, it's it's weird. I wanna join in their bet, but I don't wanna join in their bet, you know what I mean? That's why I'm doing it, for the fun of it, you know? It's like, um, so I think it's, uh, Wee Little Me and Cafe Manager, they've been playing a lot of TFT. Uh, Wee has been doing it a lot on stream. I don't know how long he streamed. No, he streamed for like eleven hours yesterday. Grinding out that TFT, played some games with us, you know? Then, yeah. It's like it's like holy crap, dude. Popping off. A Zyra Syndra build mana is always great. Mana is raw. But not never the two together. I'm just gonna play what I'm given, honestly, but I really wanna play, uh, Debonair Syndra. Debonair Syndra VIP would be the best. Blue buff already, let's go. Debonair Syndra, blue buff. Ooh. Ooh, Debonair Syndra. I don't really need Ezreal or your, uh, Poppy here. Also, I should hold off for VIP until I see, uh, Syndra. Syndra VIP. Archonist, Sunfire. Sunfire. Wow, it wants me to go ChemTech, that's crazy, y'all. Ooh, the Twitch, I couldn't couldn't have picked up. I don't think so. Maybe, maybe if I was fast enough, but that's fine. ChemTech Sunfire is crazy, dude. If they if they if they let me. Here's Brand. Clockwork Challenger. Pretend I'm going ChemTech Challenger and slowly build towards my Debonairs. Could be a play. I save so I can econ here, maybe? I don't really have anyone to put in if I had to, uh, if I had a choice. Where are they going? Bruiser? Striker? Bruiser? Crazy. Oh my god, they're healing so much. Or is that, oh my god. The Road to Hunt 2? You're crazy, man. You're crazy. Crazy, man, crazy. Crazy. Had to make sure if that was working. Titan's Resolve on Jarvan. Probably gonna put it on Jarvan, in a sense. I don't know, man. Oh, I was tempted to pick up Brand there, but I was like, nah. There's a ChemTech right here. Fuck it. Put him in. I could blue buff, uh, Twitch Warwick and have them hold it. But no, I think I'm fine. What the heck? He gains two HP per round. Oh. Oh, Eevee keeps playing. Well, he's not playing right now, but he will be playing. He will be playing Dude, there's nothing I can get here, I mean Echo, but like, is Echo even needed? You know what I mean? He's not, I don't have Ezreal anymore, it's not, it's not ideal, it's not ideal Echo is not ideal here, um, um, um I am This guy has so many units, what the hell? Damn, unlucky Oh, he has Woodland Trinket, I was like what the fuck? Why does he have so many units? Ah, so annoying There's Syndra I don't want Bloodthirster on her though, Shojin's isn't bad I'm just gonna go this, then get items instead of, I just hope I hit her, you know? At this rate Archangel Staff is not that bad, but Ionic Spark, eh, it's whatever, it's for the future, I guess Not the present There's Zyra I don't have to lock, I can sell these too, but I'll lock it, just in case I can lock, level up, and take her Or I don't need to lock it, it's just Zyra, it's just Zyra It's Zyra, not Syndra Zyra is a secondary piece to my Syndra This guy leveled up It do be like that I don't know why I'm building them Unzire last, right, right Honestly, just put him in Put him in Chief I can roll once and see what happens Can I lock these? No, not really Wait, this guy also has Sunfire Board, well, what? No one's gonna get a lost streak if this guy keeps getting it Krugs is next, nice Fuck, unlucky Can roll once and see what happens Nothing, damn It's just luck, man Just put blue buff on somebody, I don't know I don't know if I should Warwick isn't bad Damn, bro, what is this luck? Might as well put blue buff on Warwick What? Oh, he doesn't have mana, huh? Put on Twitch Um Gensuul Static, Gensuul Gensuul might be better, Chalice Let's roll once, Debonair Talon, pick him up Oh my god, look at how many silver things that is, holy crap, that's crazy I can replace Camille with Talon It'll rip our thing in half, but you know, I don't know I don't know, man There's a Singed And it's, he's an assassin anyway, so it's like, doesn't really matter what happened Super weak team Damn It's hard, it's hard getting the Debonaires to show up in my shop, I guess someone already has it? No, mutant, bruiser mutant, hashtag striker, assassin hashtag striker, Bodyguard Challenger, Innovator Scrap, yeah, I don't know Archangels Embrace, I guess Wow, there's a Seraphine, that's crazy I'll pick up a Seraphine Not gonna help much, but I'll pick him up, pick her up Oh, there's a Leona, there it is, Leona It's a Woodland Trinket again, right? Damn Is that a fucking Zonya, bro? Oh my god There's a Leona But I should go for items Another rod, isn't bad, Rabidons Rabidons Static Shiv Rabidons Rune on Hurricanes, you know? There's quite a bit Rabidons in blue buff is crazy Might work I'm gonna roll a bit here Need a Twitch though There's Syndra Rabidons on her What the heck, 2 Zeke's Herald on Malzahar, that's crazy I need a second Bodyguard instead of a Singed He's an Innovator, he's not a Bodyguard I can put them in after wards Oh, Leona, I'm not sure about that one Oh, there it is, Syndra There needs to be a Bodyguard Blitzcrank Let's hit that I no longer need uh, Twitch anymore Put in Seraphine instead of Twitch now Oh my god, I'm still losing 2 mirrors Actually, a Blitzcrank there isn't bad There's a Bran Another Bodyguard There we go, Syndra Can do Static Shiv Syndra if I wanted to Warm Oz on Leona And Gargoyle on him 8000 damage with Syndra, let's go VIP Syndra Okay, I got Zyra as well I don't need Talon actually Right now Might need him later Let's lock this since Talon 3 and Bran is in here Or not Talon 3, uh, Talon uh, 2 star Damn, unlucky How's the games going? I'm I'm in 7th? If if you wanna know how the games are going, I've been 7th I think you can definitely tell how the games are going I was studying earlier, so you missed me studying, you just saw me playing games? What is this? Denise? Huh? Why do you only watch me when I'm playing games? Why not when I'm studying? Zonyas? Oh no, what will I ever do? Oh my god, he heals so much Get wrecked Syndra doing 5k damage Ooh, Zeri You know it, I don't care, I don't care if she fits in my comp or not Honestly, Blitzcrank isn't doing much, Zeri in this place instead of Blitzcrank might do a lot more Main- mainly because she like, kites, you know? Oh, she's Debonair, actually I do need her, lol Seraphine, for now, Zeri can go there There you go, Seraphine goes back Uh oh No! 8 health I am losing I am losing Scholar and Zyra? Scholar and Zyra? Nah What was Zeri? Oh god, so many Now I have no econ This time, I'm just not so lucky, I guess This is what happens when you try to force things, I guess Just go with whatever you have, honestly, I should want Chemtech uh, Whatever, Innovators, whatever No! You ate my carry, 1 HP, I'm at 1 HP Is it better to have Draven 1 than Bran 2? I don't know Put this on Zeri I'll do it, if she lives longer, I'll do it Oh god. I do be like this sometimes. Zeri? There's a Bran 3. Oh, I don't think I got in time. Bran 3 on the bench, 0 items. Oh, my carry's dead. I do be like that. Ooh... Well, that is a 7th for me. Forcing things bad. Forcing things is bad. Just play with what you are given. Forcing things bad. No, please don't, don't demote me, please. Please, please, please. Uh uh, don't demote me. Don't, don't, oh no! My 20 LP. But... Oh, sorry EBK, I made fun of you right then and there. Yeah, let's just, just play what you are given, don't, don't force things, don't force things. I do be like that sometimes. Where is my buddy Wee at? He is offline, okay. Resus and Valorant. Wait, did EBK can't stream it? What the heck? Rip EBK, BBBB, BBBBBB, BBBK. BBBK. Rip BBBK. 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 I got the bow, see you later nerds. Wow, Gunswell's right off the get-go. Oh look, debonair. I mean... It's given to me, you know? I'll probably sell this VIP right when I see another Bran, you know? Luden's Echo. When is mercenary? I don't think that's my type of playstyle, honestly. Hyperroll was fun though. Hyperroll was crazy. As an augment? That thing is crazy, man. What the heck is that? Manic Remover. Hmm, solid. I don't think I would use it, but that's cool. Oh god, I don't have a, I don't have a thing. Bodyguard? If I win this, I get econ. If I win this, I get econ! Please, econ! Overpower? Uh oh. Uh oh. Striker move. He has Nar and Rek'Sai. No, he couldn't heal in time. Oh my god, I didn't win. I'm sad. No econ for me, man. No econ for me. Unlucky. Should probably sell this now. Well, I have some econ now. Gunswell's Blade isn't bad. I can even equip it on Bran early and then use the magnetic remover. Dude, everyone's slamming items, what the heck is this shit? So many Yordles. Yordle and Blitz and Caitlyn, what the fuck is this team, man? Huh? Makes no sense, man, makes no sense. Got my Syndra, that's nice. I need better items though. Why did I get a magnetic remover? Why didn't I get an actual item? A mana would be nice, no, magnetic remover bow. Or Reforger. Reforges chain this into something useful. For my team, you know? I don't even know what I'm trying to get. Mana? And a Leona? Oh, magnetic remover on Leona. Not a bad idea. Static Shiv? Magnetic remover on a Leona. Yeah? Static Shiv. Solid, it's a solid pick with Luden's Echo. And the Syndra. Lock it? I don't know if I want to unlock it right now. Nice, I'm not at the bottom. That guy is. He's going Enchanter. There it is, there's the Syndra. That's nice. Leona, Zyra. Uh oh, Echo. Bye. Damn, not enough damage on Syndra here. I need more damage on her. There's a Syndra, Zyra. Don't need a poppy, I don't know why I bought her. Might as well put the Rod on Syndra. Give her 10 extra ability power. The Rod, if I get like #Gunblade, Gunswell's, Rabidons, Jor'Khaun. Those are the ones I want to look for, nope, nope. Come on, man. Okay, Rabidons, I'll take that. Sunfire on Leona again, once again. That was kind of iffy, but you know, I need to get stronger a little bit so we can survive a little bit longer. Phalanx #? Easy. Let's go. Leona being the tank there is crazy good for me. Oh, deleted. This guy has lots of items and econ, or more econ than I do, so... What the fuck is that? That costs 1 more? Huh? On your board, I don't know. I'm gonna do this, so game less damage. 15% less damage. Plus a Leona. Super solid. This is... This is upgrades to 2 stars, this is upgrade to 3 stars, that's how I'm sorting it, I don't know why, but sure. Syndicate Sniper is fun though. Can't believe I'm going this comp again, even though I couldn't force it last time. But it just keeps giving it to me, so I guess, I guess so. Dude, Leona is the best tank ever, holy crap, holy crap! It's so good. There's a Draven. They picked up Malzahar, Vi. Leona's there too. Solid, I get debonair 5 with this. He's gonna have Bloodthirster if I get a sword. It's not bad. What the heck is this Twitch, man? Delete that, delete that Twitch. Delete that. Delete that Twitch. Delete this. My fetus. Denise, you wanna play? Just not not ranked, but like normal TFT, you wanna play? You wanna play Denise? If you're still here. Are you listening? Are you listening, chief? Alright, I'm just gonna econ here. No need to really do anything here. Can you hear me, Denise? Can you guys hear me? Yeah, you guys can hear me. Wanna play, Denise? Gamer Gaming? TFT? You wanna play some TFT? Normal TFT? Oh no, they pulled my Syndra, how? Aw, fuck. That's annoying. Just kill as much as you can, guys. Oh, how did he how did he pull my fucking Syndra? What the heck, dude? Blitzcrank is annoying. Denise? Where ya at? Denise, 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 no. Oh, now I can put this on Draven. Wow. Ooh, Morellicon on Zyra. Poggers. Dang dude, unlucky. Draven now does 2k damage, nice. Ooh, if I get Gunblade on Draven as well. Dude, Gunblade is crazy as well. Zeri is the last debonair, I think. And then I need a spatula thing. I don't know which spatula it is. But I would need a spatula. Or an augment. An augment would be really nice, you know? Bruisers and enforcers. Hmm. That's kind of awkward. It's like he's going for a Vi build, but he doesn't even have Vi. Bruiser and enforcer, that's Vi. Do you even have Vi? Unlucky. See you later. There's a Talon. That Blitz is gonna pull Zyra or Draven? Oh, whatever. Oh, it's the guy at the bottom anyways. Watch as I get deleted by him by, or something. He's still playing Yordle's? This this late? That's crazy, dude. Enchanter Yordle's? I don't think you're gonna win, man. Just just gonna say. Yep. Ooh, a spatula. Silco, Caitlyn, Tryndamere? Any of them is pretty nice. I do need a spatula. I don't know which one, though. I guess I'll figure it out. Hopefully these Raptors give me items, like the item I need. Because it's a... Which one is it? Oh, Chain Vest. Okay, that's pretty common. That's pretty common. I mean, who would I put in Brand again? Right now? I need Zeri still. And I need Zyra to beat debonair. Not the Twitch. Yeah, throw him. Nice, let's go. Syndra OP, dude. Gain item four. It's not bad. Health and armor. Back to roles gain attack speed. Attack speed would be crazy, you know what I mean? Nope, still don't see her. Yes, pull the the Malzahar, so he can be pulled away again. Oh my god. I don't know, she, they ate my thing. My, the Eon, my tank. It's okay, Draven can be tank with a Bloodthirster. Nice. Hmm. Okay, Raptors, you gotta give me Chain Vest. Chain Vest? Nope, that's not a Chain Vest. That's not a Chain Vest. That's money. That's a sword. Oh, god. Striker and Bloodthirster again. I'm not gonna get a Chain Vest anymore. I don't think so. Shared draft doesn't feel like it's gonna be another Chain Vest. I used the Chain Vest on my Leona already to get Sunfire. Dang, it do be like that, huh? I didn't know I was gonna get a uh, spatula afterward anyways. Oh well, I guess I was just hoping. Uh oh. No, I think we still win. See you later. Uh oh, Blitzcrank. He pulled the Draven. That's okay. That's better. Than what I thought. Uh oh, team. Oh my god, so close. No, dude, 37 HP. Ah. Whatever. I still got a chance, yeah. Here we go. Oh, go on. Luden's Echo, let's go. Oh yeah, my win streak rip. Yeah, now it's just, oh my god, dude, unlucky. Static Shiv maybe? Oh, Zeri. Just a Zeri. Just give me the Zeri. I can probably stack Bloodthirster on Draven. How dumb would that be? I can put it on Talon as well, honestly. Or Zeri. I I can't, I can't even click on her. I can't even click on her if I wanted to. She was too quick. Uh oh. Who heals more? Bloodthirster, Draven, or Warwick? See you later, Warwick. Bye, Ratspy. Oh, no, he's still alive. Oh my god. Alright, Bloodthirster on Zeri, she won't die now. Yep, nothing. Whatever. I'm just gonna save up now. A spatula. Ziggs? Ziggs and I put it on Syndra. I mean, I could put it on Draven. Put Talon right here. Not bad. Thank god I moved it, right? Oh, yeah. He's gonna pull Zeri anyways, so. Doesn't matter, I guess. Uh oh. This team is crazy, dude. Oof, damn, unlucky. Ah, he pulled Zeri? Guess that's bad. Oh, Ratspy again? Uh oh. Oof, Ratspy, unlucky. Second place at least. Damn. Unlucky, dude. Oh, he still pulls the Syndra? That's annoying. Damn, bro. So annoying. Ah, so annoying, man. Why is first place always so annoying to beat against? I finally got it. Last debonair. Okay, I beat him this time. Dammit, he still pulled Syndra because Talon left. Dammit. So annoying. Talon, why didn't you just let yourself get pulled? Oh. Ow. Alright, well, second place. Again. Blitz, yeah, it's too late. Talon, you piece of shit. Assassins never get pulled, yeah. Silver two. Yay. Yay. This wasn't as strong as my, you know, my, my first place, obviously. Dude, I didn't, I didn't even want to go that, that, that comp, but I just got debonair like brand VIP, like first roll, like the very first roll, and I was like I guess I'm going debonair. Like, oh my god, man. You know? Yeah, I got seventh place when I tried to force it. I had better items on Syndra too. I had a blue buff on top of Leona having Warmogs and uh Stoneplate here. And Zeri had, I, I needed to buff up Zeri cuz she kept dying so super early in this one. But this Zeri I picked up on uh the, what is it called? The Carousel? Yeah, so I picked up Zeri on the Carousel and I picked up the Emblem on Carousel as well. Like, I had a spatula, but I, I already used a chain vest on Sunfire Cape earlier. So I was like, fuck. Yeah. It was, it was not the same. Honestly, the big difference is the two redemptions from, from this game. That, that first place was crazy. Two redemptions, oh my god. Redemption's so broken. Give it to me again, please. I mean, I, instead of Morellicon, I could have bought, I don't know. It, it's a little bit iffy. You know? Dear Spats, it could have been the VIP trade, yeah. Yeah, it do be like that. Well, next game. Onto the next one. Did you see my tweet? Uh, We? What was my tweet? Nah, just got home. Oh, this is, is the one from 18 hours ago. Yeah, it was like I, I was just like thanking everyone in the raid thing. And it was like basically um thank everyone for the rain. We, I played ranked TFT because this guy. Because We, yeah, that one. I was like, because We made me want to do it. By watching so much of We's streams, I wanted to do it myself. What the heck is this? Shroud? No, it's Quicksilver. Innovator? I can lock this, right? Yeah. Or I can sell and take him up. Pick him up, easy. Big brain. Don't even need Leona. Two target dummies. Featherweights. Thrill of the Hunt. Target dummies. Thrill, easy? Nooo, nooo, man. Nooo, I don't play Thrill though. Oh shit, I don't have a Chemtech? Thrill of the Hunt, but it's so, you have to kill them. It's, that's so hard if you don't have a frontline. And he has my gloves. I mean, I could play Quicksilver on him, but it's like Wait, this gives you a bonus attack speed? Since when, bro? When, what did they change? Jewel Gauntlet, yeah. There's no items to put on Singed anymore. It's because I upgraded him like an idiot, whatever. A challenger. Open challenger. Pickup assassin. I mean, chemtank. Geat. I'm not gonna get Innovator, so might as well get this. I don't know how to build Irelia. I've never gone that route. I mean, I can try it. Is Irelia, what is she? I don't even know what she is. Hmm. Can put in Zac instead of uh Twitch here. Just get buffier. Early game is all about the health. I'm trying to figure out perfect items, yeah, I don't know, man. Dead start. You like? I don't know, I don't know. I don't know how to build this start, but sure, I'll, I'll, I'll just, you know, roll with it. Do you go into chemtech, chemtech, or do you go into challenger here? You can go either, right? Depending on your second augment. It's a Warwar game? Warwick game? Warwar game? Warwar! I mean, I can pick up Camille, but what is Camille gonna do, right? Just give me more challengers. Challenger up this complete. I don't know if I need these four. Honestly, I can sell everything right here for Econ, but that's kinda, that's kinda BS. Zilean Tryndamere over Twitch Camille, okay. Yeah, I'm gonna just sell those two. I don't think I'm going Innovator. Not, not, not this time. Wait, what happened to my team? Why'd you sell Camille? Because you said Zilean and Tryndamere over Camille. Is that not right? Oof. Commas. Dude, I can't read. You made it so difficult to read that one. Huh? It's okay. I'll just play, play my way and lose. I love playing my way and lose. Ah yeah, so much, so much things to pick up here. Can't wait. Hmm. I would put QSS, but I have Singed in right now. I would need to get Singed too again. We loves backseating, confirmed. Backseat gamer. Backseat gamer. Yo, calm down with the Cavs, you're gonna get knightbotted. Only good time? What, you want me to sell Singed? Then I don't, I don't get chemtank. Hmm, I'm so confused. I'm so confused. Oh, it didn't, I did not wanna press it there. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, game. Thank you. Very much. Love it. What if I just go chemtank? Chem, chemtech forever? All, all the way. Nine, nine chemtacks. What if I just do that real quick? We, We's build is too, too complicated. My, my brain hurt. My brain is hurting. My brain is hurting. It's too complicated. Brain hurt. Brain hurt. Brain hurt. Brain hurt. My brain is hurting too much. I can't go where We is trying to get me to go. I'm gonna just go straight up chemtech. 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 Aw, chemtech. Aw, chemtech. Chemtackers. QSS on Warwick? And then something else on Singed? I can put Shroud on him. Shroud would probably be better. Are you in a channel? Yeah, I'm in a channel. I'm in Volk's room. Only allowed to be entered by Volk. We'll make a lol. Well, Zilean gives you clockwork. So if I do this right now. Not bad. Won't really have a backline. I don't really like back, backseating cuz I, I get too confused. My brain not big enough. Hmm. One random completed item? What the fuck is this shit, bro? Bruiser? What does Bruiser even give? Your whole team gain bo- bonus maximum health. I mean give me an item, bro. Morellicon, yep, thank you. Very nice. Let me put that on Warwick real quick. Alright, I'm gonna put QSS on him first. Yeah, this second augment feels like the first augment. Like, like, it should be in the first round, not the second round. I mean, if you wanna talk, I'm down to talk. There you go. Nice swap. Nice swap calls. Yo. Really? Cuz I'm, I'm just going for chemtech. Not really going for anything.
I mean, it's working well. You're, like, you're following what I usually do. If you go full chemtech, then you could easily go like before challenger, buy chemtech. Or however many chemtech you're trying to fit in.
Fuck, man, he just took my item, man. Where do I go now? Oh. Bro, they take everything. I wanted a sword, but, ah, fuck, man, whatever. Alright, so this guy, Tryndamere? Tryndamere in for who? Zac?
Currently? I would say personally over Singed. I'm speaking very slowly, so you can stop me if you want to.
Hmm. Okay, kinda clutch. Oh, Renata, hello! Nice to meet you! How you doing? Yeah. So I have six, or three on the bench right now? Three chemtacks? I don't know what these items. Is Renata AP? Is Renata AP?
She could work, she worked very well with the Morelos they have.
Hmm. Yeah, I think so. Uh, Morellos and Rabidons, maybe? Hmm. Now Camille? Oh god, this is, this is so confusing.
Yeah, it becomes confusing, but it's good to learn whenever you can.
What? So confusing. Consuming. My walls are giving in. Yeah. Crazy. Where's his Renata? Yeah?
Yeah. Oh, actually, you should actually put Morelos on Renata.
Yeah, yeah. I forgot to. But Rabidons, right?
I wouldn't slam it yet. I would give it a little bit. Cuz you can get good items.
Get items here, yeah.
Yeah. Personally, I would read, but it's not a good choice. So... Oh, let me review percent.
Okay. That's a lot of items. #gunblade. You know, gunblade. #wise. Gunblade. #gunblade. #gunblade? On a Warwick? Edge of Night. Edge of Night on Warwick? Who gains more attack speed? Oh my, no, you can't. Edge of Night Warwick. That'd be crazy. Oh god, I'm, I'm getting destroyed. Hmm. I see. Victor is the last one I need. Oh, okay. But Edge of Night though? Choices. The choices are real. Let me see what Renata does, actually. Eh? Do I really wanna Jeweled Gauntlet on her? Oof. Oof. Deaves Gloves on someone else might be better. Ow. I'm gonna have to slam some items soon. I'm going Edge of Nights. Ooh, Victor. Hello? Victor?
Hey, I live again. If you're still freaking.
Victor. Victor, Victor, Victor. No, that's my Victor. My bo- My, my Victor.
Wait, did you go? Wait, oh no.
My Victor. He took my Victor. Should I do #gunblade on Warwick or Edge of Night?
Ooh, um, Michael, you don't have the items for her break.
Oh, it took me like that?
Yeah.
So... Forty attack speed.
I think it's time to give him some Warwick dream. We're going for the Renata dream here.
No! I won't give up.
Wait. Oh no. Wait, no!
I won't give up. I'm not doing it. Wait! No, he died! If only he had Bloodthirster or some shit.
Just attack speed, that's all he needs. He has self heal. He's cool like that.
Oh, they, they buff Banshees? Holy crap.
Oh yeah, Banshees, yeah. It's been like that for a bit.
What the? Windfall? What? Which one? Which one?
Uh, it could be makeshift, honestly.
Makeshift?
But I'm not sure.
What is Windfall? You gain two gold?
You'll get forty-five gold here, because it's your third item.
Oh. Oh, you just get money? Is Warwick two cost? He is. That the weight isn't bad. I'mma do it. I don't care. I'm doing it. I'm doing it. I'm doing it. I am doing it. I won't play Zilean. I don't know, man. I don't know if I'm playing him, man.
I don't need a free star.
Yeah.
At this point, you probably drop the Zilean on your bench and wait for Orianna instead, just cuz she's a better bot.
I see, yeah. Ow.
I think it's Renata.
Owie. Give me one Singed, please. Just need one, man. One, one Singed, please. That's a Tryndamere. That's more Tryndamere's. Deaves Gloves. Singed.
Actually, yeah.
I'll wait for items here. Tear. That's good. Redemption on Renata, how about that? It has to be redemption. It has to be.
Hear me out. Instead.
What?
You could put Renata in the corner, have Quinn right next to her, and do Trap Claw and, uh, what is it? Cone? Something on Quinn?
On Quinn?
On Quinn, yeah. So Banshee's Claw. And, uh, the cloak and gear. Chalice of Power, that's what.
Oh my, the Tryndamere didn't place. I placed him there! I'm sad. Yeah, right? Dude, game's trolling me. Look, Tryndamere could've used it then! Let me see one, though.
Oh yeah, let's go Renata carry. Easy game. Now you just need to find a blue buff or Shojin on this carousel, preferably Shojin.
Yeah. Ooh, Renata 2?
Let's go.
Kai'Sa? Hear me out. Instead of Camille, Kai'Sa.
It's instead of, um, Quinn.
Quinn? Kai'Sa? Okay.
You just place that.
Yeah. Tryndamere 3?
That is a part of the comp.
Oh my god! What is this? Did I get rid of Camille already? No, Camille's here. Uh! I have too much on my bench. Do I get rid of Twitcher? Do I need him anymore?
Uh, to fit in seven chem tech total, you need
Twitch.
Uh, two more levels. And that's gonna be a really long comp. Right?
Yeah. Oops, I pressed the wrong button. Ah, let me just pick her. I don't know why. I'm trolling, I'm trolling. I'm a big troll. Orianna?
So to fit Orianna in right now, you have to hit level eight.
Yeah.
And I think with that. Uh...
No, Orianna! Oh, my whole team dead. No! I die. Six, please. Sad. Yep. Yeah. It do be like that. I lose like twenty, I think? Twenty LP? Should be like twenty.
Yeah, I'm honestly convinced stacking all on chem tech.
Fourteen. Fourteen, I think that.
Are you more forced? You have the comp. It, it's just like you got shattered on the aggro.
Yeah.
The items did not go your way.
Oh, did you wanna play normals?
I mean, we could, sure. I do feel like I need to start my stream at all.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll wait, I'll wait for you.
Okay.
It's, uh, invite to game. I'mma be right back. I'mma take a piss. Okay. I am back.
Alrighty. I think I am good. I should be in lobby, yes?
Yep.
Alright. It seems up, so I'm good.
Okay. Alright, let's do some norms. Have some fun. Wait, is this rank? Okay, it's normal. I was like, oh my, Diamond and Silver. Imagine. Imagine, man. Did you gain six LP or is that from leftover from last time?
That's left, yeah, that's leftover. So that's why I left that. Cuz I think I just needed like... Oh, wait, no, I was at like sixty-something, and then I got a first, I think?
Mm-hmm. Oh, and they give you like forty-six?
Something like that. They gave me forty-something. I forgot how much I got.
Rank. Rank TFT.
Look at my one-nine-eleven, sort of sixty, somehow won.
That game is stupid.
Okay.
Any level oneers?
Level one? What?
Yeah, you can be level one in TFT. Never play League ever.
Oh, that's, yeah, I see, I see, I see. Unfortunately, I was already playing League before TFT, so that's not me.
Yeah.
I've already been painted.
Oh, people are playing Minecraft? Minecraft? I haven't seen this game in nine years. But they're doing a, uh, OTV is doing a mod thing, a mod pack thingy.
Oh, OTV's playing Minecraft?
Yeah.
Why?
Why? I don't know. It looks like it's just the and friends part, not, not the actual OTV part.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, well, time to watch that later.
Don't do this, NiKo.
Got my rod. Going debonair? Imagine.
Could.
Yeah, I mean, I picked a brand, so... I would need him to die, though. Like, not die, but like, sell him. Put, put it on Xyros Syndra. I mean... No, that's, that's called, uh, resale of value. Resale value.
Yeah, I get to sell.
Okay. Does not look like I'm going it. Arkanis? Arkanis battle?
It's a little bit early to decide.
True, true. I'm waiting for the first augment.
I mean, what you really do is you just play best, like, strongest board early, and then you just, um...
Pivot later, yeah.
Yeah, then you just like, try to slowly transition or just full-on pivot into a new comp. Ooh.
I'm not even looking at it yet. I'm changing my title. Rich get richer? Wow!
I do like that one.
Binary Airdrop. Both are good. Ooh! I already played Binary Airdrop, so let me get rich, gets richer. Money! Money!
I don't wanna do this, but...
Bruiser is your whole team gets maximum health. Hmm...
Your whole team plus, um, the Bruisers actually get double of what it shows, so...
Yeah.
Two Bruisers means 125 for your whole team, and then a lot.
250 for Bruisers, yeah. What the fuck is my comp, man? Where am I going?
Good question, all I can say is try to econ as hard as you can.
Yeah. I have, I have Arkanis, debonair, and Bruisers, huh? Alright, so I can sell these two. Do I sell Trinamir here? He's chem tank, chem tech. Sell him. Laoi is Bruiser. Alright. Oh, this guy has 3 class units already, oh my god, and he still lost. Imagine. I don't even have 2 star anything, dude. How do you already lose? 3's a company. 3's a company and Triforce is crazy. That's a crazy duo.
Could be, yeah, it could be a good combo.
So Rich Get Richer is like 70, and then I can gain more money at 70. Oh my god, dude. That means I can't level here, I mean, I don't even have debonair, I just have 2. Can sell this Ziggs. Oh, this guy's going Yordle, yeah, I'm definitely selling this Ziggs, man. It doesn't matter, cause he gets a free Yordle anyways, but... I lost this one though, unlucky. Oh wait, I didn't lose, huh? Bruiser OP. Bruiser buff OP, my team didn't die. I was gonna sell Ziggs, but... Should I? Is it even worse? Is it even worth, man? Yeah, sell it, sell him! Sell him! Self jump. Wait, how much gold do you have, Wei?
Not much.
Are you just rolling?
Probably fast leveling.
Rolling? Oh, leveling, okay.
No, never roll early.
Yeah, I was like, rolling early, question mark. Wait, are you level 5 already? Yeah, okay, I see. Wonder what everyone else is doing with their money. Meanwhile, I'm sitting here with 30 gold. Oh, a spat! Gonna have to get this. Thank you. That's gonna make me a Rek'Sai too, but it doesn't matter, I'm selling Rek'Sai afterward. There I get a debonair buff. I can keep Rek'Sai and then just put... Nope, I got, I got Syndra. It is over. It is the over. I like how I put Leona in the corner, like, what is she gonna do in the corner?
I think it both, probably.
True. I don't even have carries out there yet. Oh, you're going chem tank scrap? Chem tank scrap? Scrap the dude. Scrap Innovator? Yordle Enchanter?
Okay.
Hmm... That's crazy. Money maker. Oh no, it's a Blitz! Not my Brand! Chem tech, please. Please chem tech. Please. 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 I don't have enough health. Ow.
You have a lot of health right now, actually.
No, my, my, my champions don't have enough health.
Oh, yeah, fair point.
I'mma hold this, so, uh, Wei doesn't get it. This is not gonna ma- matter much, but you know. I'll take Zach. That was better Bruiser than that Laoi. Wow, Spear of Shojin on my Syndra? You shouldn't have.
Sure, they really shouldn't. That's some shit, don't try that?
Wow, 2 star Talon? You shouldn't have. Alright, time to put in. Jolt Gauntlet on Syndra? No way! That'd be crazy. Oh, this guy's going Merx again, oof. Not this guy.
Yeah, there's two more players in lobby, so hopefully they might do soon. It's always funny wondering what they do.
Oh, this is the guy who went 3's a company. Wait, I fought him twice already. Huh?
Yeah, I fought the 2-2s guy twice, I think I've beaten both of them.
Oh, I'm at 70 gold now. Total income possible, 13. Holy crap.
Challenger, uh, then there's this guy who has red and tree, and that's good.
I'm inside his robot. If I fight against him, I lose, I lose instantly. Oh no, it's him! I lose instantly. Oh no, man.
Send that item 100%.
I don't have anyone built right now. Not even Brand.
Nice, I think I win that just because of that.
Awe! Kazawee! Oh, the bottom guy has 5 Merx, oh, I see. Oh my god, first aid kit? I've never seen this shit! Wait, that's so broken, Leona is like, god tier at shielding.
Just one, what? Huh? Wait, what am I doing? I'm rolling now. I shouldn't be rolling right now, but I can't help it. Holy fuck.
Same.
Kidding, there's none.
Nothing. Nada.
Yeah, really. Do this for now, make some shong, I think? Check out the scrap?
Fuck, dude, stop giving me these VIPs that I don't want. You know, I haven't seen Zara yet, that's crazy.
I'll have Zara in my shop right now.
That's crazy, dude. I have Echo.
Have you found Warwick? Cause I haven't found a single one, oh hey, first place, nice, nice.
I think I saw one.
You haven't seen, I haven't seen a single one of Warwick or Trinamir.
I saw Trinamir like 3 times already, I'll look at Syndra. Any of the bows is fine for me. I need a Cassidy, so I don't accidentally upgrade. I don't think I can, but you know. Runon's Hurricane on my Syndra. You think I won't? I'll do it. I'll do it. Oh, Warwick! Hello. Nice to meet you.
I haven't found a single Warwick or Trinamir.
I've seen like so many, yeah. Oh, this guy has Redemption, oh. He's a healing menace. Oh, that Senna does damage, dude, oh, I died. Boom, bro! 69, nice. And you're 96! Wow!
Actually, not 96, it's a good number.
Yeah.
Why? There's none! What the fuck is this? What? Where did I lose my mind? I've... I just need a single one, just, just...
Just one, man.
One Trinamir, please, a babe! Move my shit here, dude, I found Orianna 2 before I found a single one of them.
That's crazy. Is someone picking up your Trinamirs?
There is somebody picking up Warwick, they have 6 of them, but even then, there's plenty more in the pool.
Yeah.
I've seen 3 people go Warwick 2.
That's crazy. Oh my god, I barely beat this guy! Oh my god!
Did this guy pivot into my comp?
Bitch! I said it for ya.
Cause I want to, who I want to. Oh man, what do I do? I don't know, let's do it here, oh...
I'm here to help. Yo.
Find my sanity, I've lost it, I can't find it, I'm on, on my board.
Uh, rapid fire cannon on my Syndra.
So I sell this, 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 you win, you win, you win.
I'm actually tempted, I'mma do it. I'm fucking trolling. I'm trolling for the memes!
Good meme, good meme, give it probably a 10 out of 100.
Yeah. Wait, what, whoops. Oh, this guy, oh, it's you!
I finally hit.
Nice. Ow, you hit both of them, yeah.
Yeah, I hit both of them and a crit, it was my luck. Alright, this, this same exact team is me, I'm so mad about it.
Yeah.
Not as strong as me though, cause they're still missing, uh, Zach, and they're missing, uh... Orianna.
Wait, someone's building Leona as well, what is he building? Oh my god, he's pivoting into me? No! He's a Merk pivoting into me, dude. Imagine.
Real safe, happens.
Yeah.
Still didn't have a clear, that's good.
Ow.
Oh, wait, they have 2 shit, not even 4, wow.
This Quinn 3? With a 1 singler tier? Huh?
Huh, yeah, it's Quinn 3, farm.
Yeah, crazy.
Very interesting. I think I have to roll down now. My comp is so bad this game.
I only have econ! She's gonna not there, Leona, I don't have anything else to put in right now.
He has 5 Warricks, okay. I think I could beat him, this guy has a Silkgo.
Ooh!
Why? I think I beat this though.
This Yordle's player? Are you actually going Yordles?
I would've wanted to pack into, damn. Wait? This is so fucking close, but I just can't kill the buy.
7k damage Syndra, you never disappoint. Oh god, what do I get here? A rod? I'll just get it. And then put it on Zeri when I get her. Big brain. Gunswall on Zeri.
Why did you do this to me?
Me?
Yeah.
What?
I'm so desperate, I need rod.
Oh! Troll, dude. Troll. Oh, I need to lock this, because there's Draven too. Oh, bullet, oh, it's too late. I could sell Talon, Thorn. Whatever, I don't care.
Innovator, challenger, kind of that.
Oh, this is the same comp as me, yep, this one. It's this one. He has the same comp, but he has Tom Kench for some reason, oh god, and Silkgo. The hell? No, he has Draven too. I, I mean, I have Draven in the shop, it's just that...
It's all bad.
Oh, Celestial Blessing plus first aid kit, oh my god, I'm trolling, I'm, I'm, I'm trolling, dude. I'm trolling. I'm trolling the game. So I heal with Celestia- So I heal with Celestial Blessing, right? And then first aid kit multiplies it. Yeah. Wait, how do you have one hundred and twenty HP? Cheating, he's cheating, he's hacking in, he's hacking in health. Uh oh. Oh, this guy has Zeri too? Oh my god dude. Oh my god, Zeri two deletes me man. He also has Sunfire Board, which like cancelled my fucking healing. That's annoying, can you kill God of Day three dude? I can't.
I don't know.
I can't kill that guy, I can't kill that guy. I need Zerian at Spat, basically.
There we go.
Ah yes, give me more money when I'm literally so high econ. I wonder where everyone places their units huh? On the right side, say no less, say less. Oh no, this is Wee's mirror, please. No way, it's not. Is it? No, it's not, it's not, okay. But I'm still gonna lose. This guy has Warwick three dude.
Oh, that's the guy I'm fighting right now. That's funny.
Owie dude, I'm gonna lose. Ow, ten HP. Well, I'm gonna die next, next thing anyway, so it's time to roll down. Or...
Apologize, but I have to attempt to counter position for you.
For me? I destroyed, well, not destroyed, I, I countered this guy hard with positioning. Triple kill! Uh oh, he has Tom Kench with Shojins and Warmogs and Spirit, Ornn Spirit.
Wait.
Huh? What is this?
Yeah, he's probably gonna actually one v, one v nine right here, I'm pretty sure, wait.
Huh? He ate like half my units before that happened.
Yeah.
Oh my god dude.
This is just a really crazy item on him.
Oh, Kai'Sa two?
Like this guy.
I see. Zyra three, okay, sure. Oh, it's Wee, oh no. I had to slam, I had to slam, I didn't know if I was gonna make it.
Yeah, I'm not able to do enough damage, I don't have a lot of.
I, I did not hit Zeri, so I'm just gonna go with, um, Kai'Sa. When am I going? I don't know. Give me Warmogs. Put this on Leona. Bro, my shroud didn't even hit you and you still lost. This dude be like that.
I might have to just level here. Definitely seems like it.
I don't even know what I would hit at this point. Ah yes, a fourth Kai'Sa. So unuseful. I got four Kai'Sas before one Zeri, oh my god, bro, hell. Oh, I might lose here actually, he's strong. Oh yeah, it's an L. Die. Rip, fourth place or fifth place, Saj. Time to watch Wee.
Pretty much shit. Gonna lose my shit.
Gonna lose my shit. Isn't it fun though? We're playing together. We can lose our shits together.
It would be fun if people weren't always taking my comp.
Yeah.
Always contested.
This is an innovator comp, what the hell? Yeah, I lost to this guy too.
I'm surprised that two items switches doing that good.
Static Shiv. Yeah, maybe like Quinn. You know?
No, not even Quinn, I would, I would probably just try Tryndamere, he needs. Although I have the health, definitely last of Kira, so maybe I'll wait for something there.
Yeah, Orianna couldn't use, uh, mana. Orianna could, yeah, yeah, I can see it being used properly. On Ori.
I didn't realize he had two Zephyrs, that's obnoxious, what the fuck?
Yeah.
Okay Zach, pop and do damage.
There was one, um, one season. Where I had three Zephyrs. And it wa, I was just, it was seven v four all the time. Isn't Redemption better if you're near them?
I'd swallow for Zach, smooth, that's all.
Oh.
Shouldn't be reduced so much, Warwick gets enough healing control.
I see, I see. Oh my god, so many Tryndameres, zoom in.
I think I could do this, since I have more CC alive.
Yeah. He only had, uh, two and a half items on Warwick. Last one.
Oh yes, the freeze after just, how much I could do again?
Honestly, fifth is really good in a Diamond lobby. For a silver player.
Backed up.
Oh, he has Zeri.
They actually hit everything else first.
It's Talon, wait, what is that? What Zeri is that? Hashtag.
Xtec.
What the?
Very interesting comp. Um, definitely. Oh wait.
Shojin, this is not bad. Zeke, you know? Yeah. It's a little bit too late. Zeke is nice.
Man.
Not, not hitting, yeah, feels bad man. His Sunfire Board does not make it any easier.
Funny from biggest issue. Is that? My carries get targeted because my other frontline gets Zephyr?
Yeah.
Like two Zephyrs just kind of up here, I can't do anything about it.
Now his team is crazy man.
Ah, it's just, stupid annoying. I think what I have to do is position very differently. Uh, bike freak, yeah, I'm not making that. Okay. Like that's insane, it's, plenty shield, plenty damage, plenty weak damage, yeah. The way I'm stopping that, so how do I do this? Okay. I'm at this position, so I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't. Wait, that hit, backpack there. I tried.
GGs.
Man, getting griefed here, yeah. I hate it whenever people still force. I was locked into it because my first aug, I was like, you know what?
Yeah, yeah.
Augment, sure, I can go, I have the items, yada yada. The other guy, that's, he's just.
I think he had mercs at first.
Yes, yes, I didn't give it into my comp. He's kind of a dumb ass, if I do say so myself. And I do.
We go again?
I'm done.
Were you planning on streaming today?
Yeah, I just finally got home.
Oh, I see, I see. What? Who declined? It's, it's just norms man, maybe he wanna play ranked. Oh shit, I don't have my mouse. Oh my god, we got two level ones. It really doesn't mean anything, but. It's so weird seeing it still.
Yeah, having fifty, actually applying a League of weird, but it's the same because of our champions.
It's so, yeah, they just copied and paste it from, from League.
Almost, almost.
But like, it's like so weird because like Valorant is its own separate entity, right?
Yeah, but they have different agents with different abilities, so they're, a whole different place.
Yeah.
They can't attach it to the same client, or else I'm sure they would.
When are they gonna make, uh, another game? It's gonna be like Prop Hunt, but with champions. And then, and then they can put it into the client. Alright, I want you to get Hyperroll, so you have to do it. I really got one item, okay.
Yeah?
Yeah.
That's normal.
Just one, just a single item.
Yeah, that's completely normal, you usually get one per wave.
Saj. Just give me luck.
I don't think you ever get two unless like it's a little bit later and you haven't gotten them yet, you're just gonna lose it.
Oh. Chem tech? Ew. Chem tech?
Could, I don't think I've done two, I'll be stuck, right?
Do I go chem tech? Ah, fuck no. Did you get anything fun?
No, bad stuff actually.
What the fuck is, okay, I guess I'm going assassins, what the hell? I just hit all three assassins, early game? Okay. Awkward. I don't know what I'm doing, I'm trolling. I went against a bruiser, rip my whole team. I went against a bruiser, rip my whole team. My hashtag isn't bad. Hashtag assassin. What is assassin again? They need spat and... Gloves? Probably. Probably. Nothing's gonna help me here. Unlucky. Yorl comp again? Huh, you're doing calculated loss, but little did you know, I'm gonna be the one who's losing. So we, how's it going? We're at the bottom.
Thank you.
We're at the bottom down here. Lose streak, here we come. Wait, we, are you doing the same strategy?
Yeah, I'm doing the same. Trying to, ah shit, I already fucked football.
What is mutant? This game?
Armor, magic resist, and a little bit of AD and AP.
It's not a bad idea to keep some of them. Oh, hello we. Who's gonna lose streak now? Oh wait, you have items.
Yeah, yeah. Unless he chose to throw.
No, you got it. No, you win.
I mean, I said, yeah.
Shut up, I'm the one who's losing streaky. Wait, wait, okay, got it. Oh my god.
I chose to win here.
Yeah, you slam all your items. I have zero items. Hmm, hashtag. Hmm. Hell. Honestly, looks like an eighth.
Special mid player, that's cool. Oh, merc player as well.
Three star zigs. That's crazy, man.
It is yours, right?
Yeah.
A little bit of that, thank you. Something for the last, for the one. Ah, wish I could reach a little bit of troll here, I think. There's a... No, I did that, I did that.
We do this.
Close that comp here.
I sense fear.
Hmm. Might be better just to go hashtag. Ah, Ralia. What is she?
Scrap, uh, striker.
Hmm. Oh my god, I beat him. I beat icy moonlight. No longer on fire. Get beat by my assassins. Oh, whoops. I'm gonna close this box before I throw it off the, the window. Oh, hello we. Greetings. A Syndra build, I see.
Bad Syndra in it, yeah.
A Syndra build, I see. Nazarhar build, I see. Rip. Hmm.
It's bad streak. I don't know if it's one, but it takes every time.
What is this guy healing from? Annoying. Is it Lulu? Does Lulu heal?
She gives health, it's not technically healing.
Zeke. What, no, he, he gets heals, I don't know what it is from though. Uh, fuck. I don't remember. It's a Yorl player, this guy. Duanzao, wah wah wah.
Oh, it's a mana heal.
Oh, it's a Senna.
It's a mana heal and Lulu increases health. Max anchored.
I got lucky, I picked up Zeri, and I was like, sure, Demone Air? Demone Air anyone? Don't mind if I do. Yep. What, what item does that make on her? Titan's Resolve? Don't know if I want that. Eh, I'll take this instead.
Oh, you have VIPs or?
Uh, yeah, that's why I was like, okay. I see, and then I picked up draven, and I'm like, yep. That's how it's gonna be, huh? Assassins didn't work out for me. Oh no, another hashtag user? Zeri is just deleting them from so far. Amazing dude, amazing. How are you doing?
Pretty good.
High five? Oh no, what is this? High five? Game five, re- five random, five cost champions? No, if I was going something like that, maybe, but I think I'm gonna just go this for now. I have nine units. I hope I don't go against wee who has, uh... Oh wait, you don't have underdogs, I thought you did! Yeah, that'd be crazy. No, no, Vi! What is she gonna do against my Zeri? Zeri just kai- around the entire square of the board! Oh my god dude!
Zeri's cool like that.
She's just neon! He's like neon with unlimited, uh, of her energy thing. This is what VIP Zeri is. Ooh, Warwick! Ah, Ahaj! On Zeri! Don't mind if I do! Uh oh, it's wee! I knew it when I saw your augments. Go Zeri, go! Destroy his backline! Destroy his backline! Oh wait! Destroy his frontline! Oh no! If Kha'Zix out-jumps, all the shots will miss!
He won't jump here, it's a thing. Wait, he did jump?
Yeah, that's crazy dude! At least you don't lose a lot of health. Cho'gath 3, oh god!
You caught me at just the right time.
Yeah, dude, you hit 3 everything! Holy shit! I don't even have 2's for Zeri and Syndra and Ekko, they're still 1's! Oh no, you pulled my Draven! Whatever will I do? As I destroy your backline with Zeri again. Oh, I lost it, oof! Zeri didn't kill Syndra in time and then she kept switching targets! Fucking dumbass! Dumbass Zeri. I don't have enough. This is 3... Nope, not enough. Wait, wait! I just need one more round, and I can't, like, die-die after this round, so... It's kinda worse. Although I don't know if it's gonna help much, but... No, Zeri died! 4 HP. Wait, no one has died yet, I'm gonna die, I'm actually 8th.
The whole lobby is really low right now.
Yeah. It's crazy. Spar! I take this away from wee! I needed it! I needed it! I needed a spear.
Oh, you got spear, oh I see.
Whoops, that's not what I wanted. Wow, 10 units, never seen that before! Uh oh, I lose here. They have too much health. Nooooo! Sag. Last place. It do be like that.
Half of the lobby died in that one.
Yeah. I just didn't have enough tanks and none of my thi- I didn't hit any upgrades during that. Top boy!
He didn't get another guy's buff, Sag.
Yeah...
Maybe it's not 3, it's a little... How would it be made?
Titan's Resolve?
So, it is sparkiness? Which actually helps him a little bit. Sunfire? Which kinders me. Redemption helps him.
A reforger!
I have hope to count that I live this round, I'll wait for next round.
But what if you die here?
I can't do anything right now. That's why I said I have to, like, I can't do anything, I need something to do. I could like try to roll down regalia, but it's not a good time to.
And you don't have enough money for next level?
No. But, yeah, I can't do this, I shouldn't. I think.
Ah, if you got one more attack off there... You're all... Whoop, GG's!
My rolls with my loaded dived are actually pretty shit. I don't know what for, maybe I shouldn't have used them. No, 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 I think you should have used them. I don't know.
It'd be like that. It do be like that, dude. Hmm...
It's so bright, it's actually burning my eyes.
No! Battle pass! Ooh, an egg!
I have dark one of this, I got a dark one of this.
Let's see what egg I got! Hushtail! Sag! Anyone got any keys? Are you done wee?
There. That's what I do. So, it's hard to pick. Malzahar, what is the best thing to bolt, Malzahar? Oh, this is enough. Okay, that's okay. Uh, don't think this is gonna be there. There we go. This should be good, right? Right?
What are you looking at?
Uh, there's a thing where you can select a unit, and you can check your loaded dice chances. Loaded dice, you would use it on a specific unit.
I see.
It would give the highest to lowest chance of actually getting that given. Oh... Wait, so I actually did that perfectly and I didn't hit the same Malzahar off of that, I actually got 3.
Oh, you used, uh, loaded dice?
Yes.
It's... When I used it, I got... One of the same unit that it was on, and then like 2... 2 copies of, yeah, 2 copies of like... One set and then 2 copies of another set.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's random, um, there are specific units that will give like a slightly higher or lower chance though. And the one that I picked, acidant for Malzahar, was actually the correct one. Because at level 7 and 8, it's the highest chance of 17.5.
Yeah, cuz Malzahar is 3 cost. Oh...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That is awkward, yeah.
I don't know how I didn't pick up my last Malzahar off of that with 3 loaded dice, but I did pick up a shit ton of Cho'gath. But not good enough, cuz I still was missing 2.
Yeah. You wanna go again, or...?
I'm good too, yeah.
Yeah. Or, hear me out? Double up, no kidding! Hyper roll! Hyper roll! Okay. Double up?
I could double up.
What does workshop mean?
Uh, beta, I guess?
It had a, it was beta before, so I guess it's like, gamma? Alright, let's try it. Is prob- is it gonna find it based on our elos?
Uh, based off the... Wait. Can we replace them?
Yeah, I played it with you. No, not with you, I played it with BLT and then we got first place. I don't know why it doesn't show up. No, I don't think I played with you, wee. You played with, uh, Mickey.
I'm really certain, like, I played with both of you. I played a bunch with Mickey, but I'm pretty sure I played with you, cuz you went...
Yeah, exactly, so it's not me!
I have a lot of TTF games to sort through, man, it's not easy to remember everything.
Me and, me and BLT destroyed, he was like, "Trust me, do this, this and this," and I'm like, "Okay, I'm listening." And then we... Oh, I think we did play and then we got 8th! Or last.
Friends are 100% going for it, it's lit!
Oh my god! What are you doing Mickey?
Get outta here, gold! We don't need you here.
You wanna play Mickey? Did he leave already? He le- he left!
I might have heard his voice, I don't know.
Yeah. Maybe he just wanted to pop in and say hello?
That's one hell of a hello!
Yeah! He said, what, guaranteed fourth? True?
Yeah, yellow guaranteed fourth.
Oh yeah, you gotta tell me what you're going, so I don't go it.
I don't know yet, Irelia or challengers?
Yep, that's your go-to, so... I wanna go, um... What's it called?
You have to both, and you could easily go very nice savor.
That is good, but I, I wanna go, um, sniper again. Syndicate sniper. Is this my augment? My augment? This is so trash, man, I don't even wanna go both of these! Fuck! Third option. Yeah, third option, I did not wanna go wherever they gave me. It do be like that sometimes. I think you got money. Oh no, this is loot. This is loot. Items, you got items. Wow, Camille 2? Imagine. I just did that and I have nothing to put in. Good one! Good one, bro, oh wait, Rek'Sai works! 3 buffs! Wait, why is this guy already, huh? Oh, he left, okay, see ya, bye. Oh yeah, I leveled by the way, so... I'm coming over. Hello!